The August 6th. There we go. All right. Good morning. Welcome to the August 6th, 2024 Board of Supervisors Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we're going to begin with the roll call.
Suizmo Brandal.
Here.
Suizmo Mendez.
Here.
Suizmo Chaco.
Here.
Suizmo Quintero.
Here.
Chairman Magsick.
And I'm here.
All present, thank you.
We now are going to move to the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and the invocation and pledge is going to be led by District 2, so I turn it over to you, Supervisor Brandal.
Thank you, Chairman Magsick. Thank you, everybody, for coming today. We're going to be led in prayer by a friend of mine, Pastor Andre Sava. Andre, if you could come up to the podium, and I'm going to introduce you real quick. Andre is the head pastor, recently elevated to that position for Trinity Community Church. Andre was born in Transylvania, Romania, so that is an actual place, and you now have a friend who was born in Transylvania. And Andre grew up in his first years underneath communism, and he became a believer in high school, and his church in Romania sent him to seminary. As he was graduating seminary in Romania, he received an academic scholarship to continue his studies at Southern Baptist Theological Seminary in Louisville, Kentucky. And he went on to earn two master's degrees in theology, but he told me the most important thing about his biography is he's married to the sweetest woman on earth and is the father of four beautiful daughters. So could you all stand as Andre leads us in prayer this morning?
Thank you, Steve. Let's go to our God in prayer. Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day and for your mercies that are new to us every morning. We are grateful, and we bless your name. God, you're the Almighty One, who is clothed in majesty and armed with strength. The world stands firm and cannot be shaken. You have all wisdom and power. You control the course of world events, removing kings and setting up other kings. You give wisdom to the wise and knowledge to the scholars. You have revealed yourself through the creation around us and also through the Bible, where you laid all the main principles for how we should live our lives and how the ones in positions of authority are meant to govern the lives of the ones who elected them in those positions. So this morning, we pray. We pray for each one of these county supervisors and their families, as well as for the staff here at Fresno County, that you would help them to seek your wisdom and make your word a lamp unto their feet and a light unto their path. Holy Spirit, I ask you to fill our Fresno County leaders and their staff with wisdom, understanding, discernment, and knowledge. Remind them that the beginning of wisdom is to fear you, God, more than anything else. Grant them favor, increase their faith, and help them to pursue your excellence. Draw them to you and cause them to know and fulfill your purposes. Please place people in their paths that will provide scriptural, sound, and godly counsel, for without your counsel their plans will go in disarray. Help our supervisors to stay humble. We ask you to make their hearts pliable, willing, and obedient to your will. Cause each of their lives to glorify your name. Heavenly Father, we lift up our local leaders today. We pray for our county supervisor and all their staff and all who serve our local communities. Strengthen them with wisdom and grace for the heavy burdens they carry. May they manage their teams and projects with love and care. Keep their hearts pure and their eyes turned towards your face as they work in the best interest of the people they're called to serve. And finally, give them wisdom today. Guide them in their decisions and conversations in the next few minutes. We pray these things in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, and all God's people said. Amen. And let's say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
If I can remind members who are here today, if you can silence your cell phones, that would be greatly appreciated. Moving on to the next item, it's approve the agenda, item one. Are there any modifications or comments on the agenda from board members?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, item 15 from closed session is deleted. Item 15 from closed session is deleted.
Fifteen. All right. Hearing no other modifications, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That passes.
We now move to item number two, approve consent in item numbers 21 through 61. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, item 47 is deleted and will return to a date uncertain. Item 47 is deleted and will return to a date uncertain.
All right, duly noted. Any members wishing to poll any of the other consent items? Hearing none from us, any members in the public wishing to poll any of the consent items?
Good morning, and I request that you poll item 22 for discussion.
Item 22.
Thank you.
Seeing no further items, I'm going to close the public portion. We will hear item 22 after item four, and with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the remainder. We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That passes unanimously.
We now move to item number three, under the Board of Supervisors, presentation of retired plaque to Lydia Milano, Library Department, 39 years of service.
All right, and here with us are representatives, I believe, from the library. Sally is here and members from her team, and Sally, if you could come forward and share with us about this amazing employee.
Hi, good morning. We're honored to be here today to honor and celebrate one of our long-term employees. As you know, people come to the library for our services that we provide and our materials, but what brings it all together and makes magic happen is the staff, and Lydia is definitely one of those staff persons that we've relied on for years and years and appreciated everything she's done. Her most recent supervisor, Wendy, is here to also say a few words.
Lydia, oh Lydia, have you seen Lydia? Lydia, the library lady? Hi, my name is Wendy Eisenberg, and it was my great pleasure to be Lydia's supervisor at the Sanger Library for the past about six or seven years. But Lydia didn't just work at Sanger. In her 40 years, she touched the lives of staff and patrons throughout the Fresno County library system, and you can hear this now in the words of the old Johnny Cash song, "I've Been Everywhere." Let's see. Bookmobile, Central Library, Volunteer Services, Support Services, Selma, Fig Garden, Kingsburg, and Sanger. Lydia had a true gift for making both staff and library patrons feel welcome. Her Spanish skills allowed her to make wonderful connections with the community that she served. She was a problem solver, a teacher, and a leader. She handled challenges with patience and empathy and a sense of humor, and she always put public service first. I always enjoyed talking to Lydia when I got the chance because she was such a repository of knowledge and experience. We lost so much institutional knowledge. If you don't know something about the library, just ask Lydia. Lydia knows everything. So it's wonderful to be here today as Lydia is celebrated for her long and distinguished career of library service. Thank you.
It's been a true pleasure working with the library. I've enjoyed every year, every part of it. I've worked in many departments, many libraries, and I just love serving the public. Thank you so much.
And Lydia, we appreciate your service, and one thing that's apparent to our board is it seems like some of the longest-serving employees serve in the library, and I think it's due to leadership. So you've got amazing supervisors and a great managers overseeing everything, but we appreciate your longevity there. I know that the generations of families that you've been able to serve appreciate that, too. So thank you, and I hope you remain involved in the community. Board members, do you have anything that you'd like to add? Go ahead, Sal.
Hi, Lydia.
Hi.
Do you have any of your family members here you'd like to introduce?
My husband has come to join me. He's sitting right over there.
Okay.
My husband, yeah.
Well, thank you for all your years with the county of Fresno, and, you know, it's people like you. I know we're going to miss a lot of the institutional knowledge, as was mentioned earlier, but I think, you know, over the course of time, you've made a lot of friends, and you've really, you know, maybe without realizing it, you've given a lot of education to a lot of children and families that otherwise wouldn't have been able to move forward and succeed. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Supervisor Brandal?
Lydia, sometimes we honor somebody who's retiring from Fresno County after 20 years or 25 years, but 39 years. I don't know what the actual record is. I think it's in the Sheriff's Department, but 39 years is quite a stretch, and so I can tell from listening to your colleagues that you brought a lot to the table, not just among your colleagues, but to the constituents of Fresno County. So I just want to let you know, we appreciate all that hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, I would invite Lydia to please come forward so we can meet you up here. We're going to give you a plaque that we have for you, and we'd like to get a picture with you, so please have your family join you as well up here.
You must have been a baby when you first applied.
Thank you, and these are for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lydia.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Sally, yeah.
Come join her. Thank you.
We now move to item number four, under Chairman Magsick, proclaim August 16, 2024 as Helms Pump Storage Power Plant Day in Fresno County.
And here with us today, I believe, are a number of representatives from PG&E, and while they make their way forward for this, to receive this proclamation, I'm up here at the podium, I just would like to share how Fresno County is significant when it comes to hydroelectric power generation for the entire state of California. Most people are not aware of the Helms Project. It is a facility that, I believe, came online in the 1980s, and a few years ago, I had the pleasure of watching one of the turbines being removed out of its hole that it was in, and the turbine itself weighed a million pounds, and watching all of the structures that had to be built to lift this thing out of the ground was amazing. And this particular plant, the Helms Project, I believe, when all three turbines are spinning, it generates about 1,212 megawatts, which is significant, and it can ramp up and turn on between eight and nine minutes. So when the ISO calls and says, hey, we need power now, they call the Helms Facility located right here in Fresno County. So this is an amazing asset. There are hundreds of people who really are tied to the facility when you include people who supply materials, engineering services for the Helms Project. It is a plant that is built in a mountain that moves water between Cortwright and Weshon. And here with us today are a few representatives from PG&E because they're going to be celebrating 40 years of being in service, and I so greatly appreciate you choosing Fresno County, and I would love to see you expand the operation of the Helms Plant, because I know that you have the capability of doubling its size. But PG&E is here, and if you could share a little bit about some of the celebrations that are going to be taking place in about 10 days or so, and just the significance of this plant.
Thank you, Chairman Magsick. My name is James Aubtion. I'm the senior plant manager from Helms Pump Storage, and Joshua Sims is here, our regional vice president, and other members of our team. It's my privilege to accept this proclamation on behalf of Pacific Gas Electric Company and the Power Generation Department. PG&E owns and operates the largest privately-held hydroelectric system in the United States. Helms is our flagship of that fleet. Southern area hydro, which Helms is part of, is centered in the foothills and mountains of eastern Fresno County. The 150 or so men and women that operate and maintain that system produce over 1,700 megawatts of clean renewable electricity enough to light up the cities of Fresno and Clovis. As Chairman Magsick pointed out, 1,200 of that comes from Helms alone, 3, 400-megawatt units, 1,000 feet underground, and we can bring those units on in less than eight minutes. The ISO likes to use that to support the grid whenever they have an issue online. As we prepare to celebrate the last 40 years of success with our flagship Helms Pump Storage Plant, we are also making plans for the next 40 years as well. We have plans to upgrade those units. We believe we can get another 180 megawatts out of what we have without building another plant. There is potential for addition even beyond that, and so we have the largest reservoirs in the world on a pump storage plant. We can operate for five days continuously without having to put water back. Most places can operate for eight hours. There's a lot of potential there for what the plant does and brings in. I would like to share comments from the original dedication. I think these are from Frederick Milkie. He was the chairman of the board, chief executive officer at the dedication, the original dedication, September 20, 1984. As I stand here with the beauty of this Sierra around me and the awesome capability of the plant inside that mountain before me, I have a sense of wonder and pride in this project. Rarely has such a huge plant using highly sophisticated technology been so successfully blended into a beautiful natural setting, leaving the host wilderness as wild and beautiful as ever. Helms is a magnificent engineering and construction achievement. It was accomplished by people who dreamed big and built well. They overcame challenges of a large underground project in a remote, high-mountain location and successfully brought it to completion. So again, as we celebrate the 40 years behind us and get ready to run this plant for another 40 years, I hope each of you will come up and join us for the celebration. I'd be honored to walk you through the plant and show you what we have. Thank you.
Yes, Buddy, please.
You know, you guys kind of missed one of the original concepts, and the original concept was when they built Diablo Canyon, it was to use the excess power at Helms to pump the water uphill.
Yes.
And that was the original concept. In fact, I just, they just kind of fell in my lap. I have, I'm a keeper of old printed stuff, and I have some stuff from the Helms Project from the guys that actually built it and had some, you know, some of the original paperwork concepts of the plant.
Right.
And I actually have that, but that was a, what a great concept, because nobody can see everything because it's underground.
Right.
It's in the, built into the mountain itself.
Yes. Yes, that original concept was very powerful. Diablo Canyon was built out at the same time as you're aware of, and it was planned that way. We used to pump all night and generate in the daytime when we're hot like this. Things have changed. We have so much solar energy now that electricity can actually go into negative pricing, but we need these plants to provide grid stability for all of that solar. So we actually pump all day now.
Right.
And generate typically on the starts and the ends of the day, and this plant supports not only the general area, but the whole West Coast for voltage support, absolutely necessary to make all of that solar work for everyone. Yep.
We thank you for this recognition.
Oh, absolutely. Sal?
Yeah. I was able to take a tour, invited to take a tour in the 80s when it first opened up. A fellow by the name of Sean Cooper invited me, and so we went up there, and it was really amazing to see all the detail that was put, not only the workmanship and all that, but on the mountain itself, because from what I was told before you could even start any work, everything had to be photographed outside the mountain. All the plants had to be photographed and put back in the same place when everything was completed, just to make it look, I mean, there was just a ton of work that went on, not only, like I said, inside, but on the outside as well. So, I mean, to have it keep operating.
Yes.
I mean, it's just amazing, the work in detail that went into that. It's a great resource that we have. And did you want to introduce the rest of your team?
Sorry?
Did you want to introduce the rest of your team?
Yes, so this is Greg Race, senior manager for our regional vice president, Erica Cabrera of our governmental relations, Jose Verdusco, okay, very good of government relations, Sarah Mendez of our regional vice president's office, Toyani Brancato, and Shannon Verdusco.
Verdari.
Verdari. They work up at Aubrey in the hydro group.
Angela Hyama.
Thank you.
Is with the regional team, and we have Ping Lee, and I'm Joshua Sims, the regional vice president. Live here, work here in Fresno County. I'm so happy to be here to support the team and also look forward to the celebration on August 16th.
Very good. Anyone else? All right, with that, I will make a motion to approve this proclamation. We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, passes unanimously. Please step forward. We've got this proclamation, and we want to get a picture with you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Good to see you. Good to see you. Thank you. Thank you for all your help. Appreciate it. Good to see you. Thank you.
Good to meet you. Good to see you.
All right, so who gets to hold this? The plant manager? All right. Thank you. Hey, I'm going to keep pushing to try to get you to double the size. That'll be good.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sure. Pleasure.
Which one is Verdari? Verdari. I'll ask him.
We now move to item number 22. As mentioned earlier this morning, a member of the public polled item 22 under Suizmo Brandal, adopt resolution authorizing staff to withdraw the county's application for grant and loan funding from the California Department of Housing and Community Development Program.
All right, so with item 22, if, actually, I'm going to, is there a staff, which staff member is assigned to this? Because we're going to hear from staff first to present this particular item. Amina, all right. So Amina will provide some comments on this particular item.
Good morning, board. Amina Flores Becker, deputy CAO. Item 22, polled by a member of the public, asks you to make a determination of the viability of the Libre Commons project in light of the financial challenges the project has faced. Libre Commons is an affordable housing and permanent supportive housing project located in District 2 in the vicinity of Shaw and Blackstone in the city of Fresno's jurisdiction. Before I get into the timeline of this specific project, I did want to call out that throughout the existence of the No Place Like Home funding program, your board has supported every project that has been brought to you for consideration, which has resulted in over 600 units that have been built and/or are being built in Fresno County. As for Libre Commons, in January of 2022, your board supported this project by authorizing the Department of Behavioral Health to submit a funding application to the state for No Place Like Home funds for the project. In August of 2023, the developer requested a $6 million subordinate loan or funding from the county to make the project competitive enough for other state funding programs and tax credits. Staff determined that because this project is located in the city's jurisdiction, it does not qualify for the county's community development funds. Fast forward to February of 2024, the city of Fresno withdrew their $3 million commitment in writing. Also in this letter, the city communicated that the project could be eligible for upcoming funds, but made no guarantee of future support. In April of 2024, the county hosted a meeting with the city and the developer to discuss a path forward. At this meeting, the developer communicated that the city's contribution was necessary for the project's viability. No clear path forward was identified, and the city did not guarantee a future recommitment of funds. It is also important to note that these funds expired in June of this year, but were extended through a request to the state by the developer that was supported by our Department of Behavioral Health. The new expiration date is January of 2025. I also want to respond to and clarify a couple of comments that have been made prior to this meeting by various stakeholders, including the state and the developer. The first is that the action would communicate that the county is not making enough efforts to further fair housing. In response, as mentioned previously, this board has supported every No Place Like Home project that has been brought before you, all of which have been or will be developed within the metropolitan area of Fresno County. In addition, recently your board approved a 39 million behavioral health bridge housing project for two locations, both located in the city of Fresno. That is an addition of 180 bridge housing units. Another comment that has been made is that by taking this action, the county would be in violation of our own draft housing element commitments of developing 75 No Place Like Home units. Also, as mentioned previously, this board has supported more than 600 No Place Like Home units, and that's not counting the various other programs that your board has supported for vulnerable populations in Fresno County. And on that note, I want to conclude by mentioning that as your deputy CAO, I have met with and discussed the needs of various communities outside of the metro area. The top two needs communicated consistently by your constituents and the administrations and elected officials of those rural cities is the desperate need for affordable housing and the expansion of supportive services. I mention this because continuing to support Libre Commons project will require a continued dedication of staff time, which, as you know, is a limited resource. This board has supported many projects in the metropolitan area of Fresno County, and the need in rural county cities and communities is great and will require dedicated attention. That concludes my comments. I'm happy to answer any questions your board may have.
Supervisor Brandal, is there anything that you would like to add?
Why don't we go out to the public?
You'd like to reserve your comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not a problem. And before we open it up to the public, I do have a couple of questions. So Fresno County, we have 15 cities, including the city of Fresno, and then we have a number of unincorporated areas, of which I think between Buddy, Brian, and myself, we have, you know, the large majority of those unincorporated areas. Are there cities or other unincorporated areas where we're looking to do affordable housing projects right now?
Not that we have active applications for. We did recently submit a behavioral health bridge housing application, round three, for the city of Selma, or a project in the city of Selma that was not awarded. And all of the projects, except for one, have been built in the city of Fresno. One was built in the city of Clovis, still the metropolitan area, but that's the only one.
And another question I have, so has the, back in 2022, when the city and the county, when we kind of came together to go after the No Place Like Home funding with the developer, it seemed like it was a, you know, good partnership working together. So has the city now identified other areas that they want to focus on, or have they made any indication that they want to maybe soon award funds to this particular location? Or, because that $3 million commitment, which was not granted within the last few months, I think in February it was determined that the $3 million wouldn't be assigned to this project. Has the city said, look, we've got funds that we've earmarked in the budget that maybe will materialize in October or anything like that?
Not to my knowledge. That, no, that has not been communicated or committed.
And then ARPA, ARPA dollars, most of that, I think, needs to be fully committed by the end of this year. Has the city talked about maybe using part of their ARPA allocation? Do they have any more ARPA dollars that you're aware of?
I'm not aware of available ARPA allocations, and I'm not aware that they've communicated or made any commitment for those funds for this project or any project.
Very good. Thank you. Not seeing any comments. We're going to move right to public discussion on this particular item. So if you would like to comment, please step forward. I'm going to ask if you can keep your comments as brief as possible, maybe two minutes. I know that the developer is here. I'd like to give the developer a little bit more time when they come forward so they can articulate all of their, all that they'd like to articulate.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could we hear from the developer who pulled the item? I think that's the right one.
Sure, that's not a problem. If Jessica would like to go first, I'm completely okay with that.
Get my water. Good morning. Thank you for the chance to discuss this item. My name's Jessica Hoff Burzak. I'm the president with Upholdings. We are developing Libre We are developing Libre Commons in partnership with Self-Health Enterprises. Together, we are two of the Fresno-based affordable housing developers working actively with the county on numerous projects, both in the city and throughout the county. We also successfully developed the project in Clovis. I'm here to correct numerous false statements that are in the resolution before you and even in the comments that were just stated. We began work on this project in 2019, and we have invested significant financial resources with the goal of creating housing for Fresno residents in need. While it's always risky to be a housing developer, and that's on us, we make our assessments based on the commitments from our partners. In this case, that included, as you heard, the unanimous resolution from this board authorizing our pursuit of this funding. It was a competitive NOFA. We were successful. The state has now awarded the project $12 million, and then we've also been awarded another $2 million under an infrastructure program. And now, with no supporting documentation, no staff report, nor dialogue with the development team, the resolution before you proposes the withdrawal of county support for state funding that has already been awarded to the project. The resolution states that the project is no longer financially feasible. That claim and several others included in the resolution are inaccurate. Because the resolution before the board includes numerous inaccuracies, and in light of the various serious legal issues that have been identified by attorneys, as well as the state's Housing Accountability Unit, in a letter received last night, including actions on the county's currently uncertified housing element, I'd ask that the resolution be withdrawn, disapproved, or at the very least tabled so we can engage in constructive and meaningful processes that move forward housing, rather than try to block it. Here is a summary of the correct information. Libre Commons is not a 123-unit project. It is an 86-unit affordable rental housing development with 42 units of permanent supportive housing for individuals and families experiencing homelessness throughout the county. The existing state awards of $14 million are all in good standing. In our partnership, as was stated, the county's Behavioral Health Department supported our request for an extension on those funds stating that these units were critically needed. That extension was granted. There is nothing at risk. The award is specific to this project and this development team and is not transferable to another location. Further, as this state program has now sunset, there is no path to reapply for these funding sources for this county. The agenda item also wrongly claims that Libre Commons requires a $9 million local funding match. There has never been a scenario that necessitated a local funding match of any sort. It is often a competitive factor, as was stated, and we work openly with our housing partners to figure out the best strategy to move a project forward. When we came to the county and discussed potential additional funding for the project, we never indicated that it was unviable, should that request not be granted. The city has not withdrawn support for this project. The city has approved all entitlements. The building permits are in process, and together, that makes this what is called a shovel-ready project. They did revoke a previous funding commitment for a specific funding cycle. The same week, Mayor Dyer assured us that Libre Commons remains eligible for future funding that may be available. I confirmed with city staff yesterday that that letter stands. Perhaps most importantly, we have not requested anything from the county, except continued support for an existing state award. We are not asking the county to replace the city funds, nor to fill any financing gaps. We simply need more time to secure the remaining funds to start construction. This is the normal pace and protocol in the world of affordable housing. We often apply to more than 20 individual sources on any project. And as long as each reward remains in good standing, there is rarely cause to do anything but proceed. This is a complex industry with complex regulations that we are responsible for layering. I assure you that almost every Fresno County affordable project is currently only partially funded in the exact same position as this project. These resources are competitive. There are not enough, and it takes all of us many, many rounds to get to the finish line. Given that the state has just extended the time period for the No Place Like Home Award, there is no reason for the county to actively preclude the use of these already awarded state funds for a local project. This will do nothing but create an active barrier to the creation of housing in this county, which will simply harm residents desperately needing housing. In light of recent state and local actions regarding our encampments, there has never been a more important time to create permanent housing. Otherwise, where can we clear people? As Fresno-based developers working on numerous projects within this county, we are very concerned about the far-reaching implications identified in the letter that you received last evening from the state's Housing Accountability Unit, where they specifically urged the board to reject this resolution. Their Housing Accountability Unit cited concern about this resolution in relation to the currently pending housing element and the specific future promised programs to how the county was going to affirmatively further their fair housing obligations.
And Jessica, if you can wrap up your comments, maybe about another 30 seconds or so. Thank you.
They go on specifically to explain that the issue of local funding is irrelevant to the county's role as the state provides the funding and the county does not incur any cost by its participation in the program. The, the letter further states the county should continue to do all it can to support the project's continued viability and not take an action that would undermine that effort. In closing, I want to share with you that we have a viable funding pathway to move this project forward in the next six to nine months with new state resources, continuing to not request local resources, and no longer needing the original money from the city. To lose the county's support at this stage would be catastrophic. We request the Board of Supervisors reject this resolution on the factual errors and the serious financial and legal risks to the board. As long as the No Place Like Home Award remains in good standing with the state, we simply ask that you stand firm in your own commitment to housing and give the team the time to do our work and start construction for units that are desperately needed. Thank you.
And at this time, other commenters, people who are here to comment on this item, please step forward. I would ask, because I think there's a number of folks, if you can limit your comments to two minutes, that would be great, so we can give as many people an opportunity to speak. Floor is yours.
Hello, Des Martinez with We're Not Invisible. Of course, I deal with the unhoused community. And currently, we are behind so many units in Fresno County, Fresno City alone. With the amount of homelessness rising since 2019, we've had a 49% rise in homelessness. You can run the stats from the pick count in 2019 to the pick count of 223. That's a lot. That doesn't show, that's because of housing, because of lack of housing units that are affordable for the individuals that are currently experiencing homelessness. So I understand that there's going to be 40 units for permanent supportive housing, which would benefit a lot of the individuals that are currently on the streets that Mr. Brandow and the rest of you guys want to go ahead and throw in jail instead of house. So why don't we just go ahead and allow housing? I don't understand why we're throwing away an opportunity where you don't have to reach into your pockets for. So instead of insanity, this is stupidity not to take it. I'm sorry. Not trying to insult you, but I'm literally, you guys are so much more educated than me, and I still don't understand how I can just simply sit up here and show you guys constantly the lack of housing does, and that's homelessness. No matter who you are or what situation you're in, regardless, you tell us to go get rehab. Get rehab. Do you have anything set up for that when we get out? No, we go back to the streets. After everybody got their pictures, their diplomas, they walk across the stage, they open up the back door and they pack your bags, and there you go, right back to the streets. This is reoccurring. This is insanity. We need to stop the insanity, and we need to build housing units to get the people off the streets, so you don't throw us in jail. We don't want to be criminalized because we can't afford where you guys live. Some of you have some really nice houses, and some of you just stayed with the, you know, basics, which is cool, but come on. Y'all make a lot of money every year. You can afford a lot. Let's think about building housing. Just allow it to go through, and let's build more because with the encampments, thank you.
Good morning. My name's Saida Ramos. I'm a policy advocate with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. According to the county's sixth cycle RHNA adopted in 2023, it identified the number of very low, low, and low-income units that need to be built by 2031. The county must build 706 units for very low-income households and 391 units for low-income households in order to fulfill their RHNA. Additionally, the housing element has found non, was found noncompliant by HCD on March 15, 2024, and is still noncompliant with state law. According to HCD's findings, the housing element shall contain programs which assist in the development of adequate housing to meet the needs of extremely low, very low, low, and moderate income households. By withdrawing this application, the county is effectively failing to adhere to the housing element law in AB 686, which created a statement that requiring public agencies and jurisdictions to go beyond combating discrimination to affirmatively further fair housing. This means taking meaningful action to address significant disparities in housing needs and in access to opportunity replacing segregated living patterns with truly integrated and balanced living patterns, transforming racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty into areas of opportunity, and fostering and maintaining compliance with civil rights and fair housing law. The duty to affirmatively further fair housing extends to all of a public agency's activities and programs relating to, to a housing and community developing. Knowing that California is currently experiencing a devastating housing crisis and that the pandemic only exacerbated this issue, the county has an obligation to build as much affordable housing as possible in order to alleviate the housing crisis in Fresno. Residents have continually uplifted affordable housing as a priority. Therefore, we urge the Board of Supervisors to vote no on withdrawing the application for this much-needed affordable housing project.
Hello, I'm Kay Burtkin with the League of Women Voters of Fresno. I don't need to remind the supervisors of the need for both affordable and supportive housing in our county. The League of Women Voters has long had positions supporting programs for provision, for the provision of affordable housing for all Californians, including the encouragement of increased density along transportation corridors. It's hard to imagine in the face of our extreme need for both affordable and supportive housing that you board members would turn back millions of dollars in state funding for Libra Coll, excuse me, Commons project that would help address both local needs in a perfect location for transit access and that would add a beautifully designed commercial and apartment project in an area currently occupied by a large and dusty vacant lot. It's worse that the resolution before you voices a generalized opposition unrelated to the Libra project or its financing against supportive housing ever to be allowed at that location. A statement that undercuts your major funding argument against this particular project. We urge you to manifest your support for progress in addressing our local housing needs by taking this resolution, by tabling this resolution, or by voting it down. Thank you.
Hi, this is Leslie Martinez. I'm a resident of Fresno County, and just want to bring up a few things around the unincorporated communities that was brought up. The incorporated, unincorporated communities do have a lot of needs, specifically with infrastructure. A lot of the reason why we can't build housing in Lanier, in Cantua, is because we do not have the basic infrastructure of water and sewer. Those are the priorities, and I think the county is on, you know, making progress to building out some of that infrastructure. But this is a shovel-ready project that the county and the entire region desperately needs. I live in the Tower District, so I know how important this project could be to my community as I'm the one who's out there helping folks, making sure that they have water, calling emergency services when folks look like they're having a medical emergency. I really urge this board to think about the thousand units that we need to provide for low-income to very low-income, and we need to make serious steps forward towards addressing that. I appreciate the past projects, but just because we've done good in the past does not mean that we have to stop here. We have to keep going, keep the momentum going, and show folks that a county that is city and rural can provide the housing units that they need, and they can do it in a quick and fast manner with support from a, like a collective of diverse stakeholders with diverse opinions. Thank you.
Hi, Brandy Newsvegas. A lot of people are gonna share about the need for affordable housing. I want to speak on this particular project and why it definitely needs support. This is in my district. I went to the workshops regarding this, this project a number of years ago, and the thing that makes this one that we, we need to particularly invest in is not just the housing units, but the other amenities that are part of this. We talk about the idea that we need to, if we're gonna improve people's lives, we need not just housing, but other things. This, from everything I remember and can see on the website, the continuing to do, it includes, you know, the services needed from behavioral health with rental assistance, but it also includes medical, buildings in, on this facility that provides medical services. It includes a computer lab, which is huge for people who are working on getting jobs and, and looking for employment in, in other needs that are met, as well as being in an area that is well-resourced to be able to travel to places they need to go. The things that are on here, including green spaces and play, play areas and whatnot, include a lot of the things that are needed, not just to get into housing, but to thrive. And given the thought and the amenities and the partnerships for medical and other supportive services for all of the, the people in here that are, that'll be living here, this is a very valuable one that I am proud to have in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tamika Rodriguez, and this is my daughter Bella Sailor. Josiah, can you stand up?
Mommy.
And that's my son Josiah Covington, and we're from the Marjorie Mason Center, and it's a, it's a 30-day emergency stay. And everything's kind of full right now, so we're just asking if you guys can build the public housing, the affordable housing that you guys are, I guess, voting for. And that'd help us out so much. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrea Robinson. I'm also with at the Marjorie Mason Center, and I would just ask you guys to please allow the public housing, because as you can see, it's a lot of us. We have kids. And they say they set us the bill to be on our own for us to handle our business, but when all that is said is done, they kick us out in 30 days. You're kicking us back out to the same stuff we're trying to leave from. Some of us women are really scarred and have been through a lot, and to be kicked back out to the same stuff that we're running from, it's ridiculous. So I'm asking you guys to please to allow the public housing. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Teresa Baldwin. This is King. I brought him up here because he is the future. And this future needs a base. A base is very important. Everybody goes home, and each day we reset, right? Wake up, next day, no mistakes in your day yet. But if a person isn't allowed to go home for that mental reset, then we don't have the behavioral resources. For when that person can't reset, they're just clotted and bombarded with just the, the woes of each day, and they don't never get to reset. I happen to be a little bit more resilient, thank God. However, housing is definitely, definitely needed for not just my future, because I, it doesn't matter about me anymore. I'm a vessel for him. So if I can't do what I need to do, then how can he be a positive product to society? He needs to keep what you guys are going, what you guys got going on. He needs to keep that going. And each day, I mean, I can't, I don't want to explain to him the bads. I want, I want him to have goods. I want him to have that base that, that, it's like filling, trying to fill up a strainer with water. It's not gonna go anywhere. We're not gonna, there is no foundation if we have to leave in 30 days, because I also live at the Marjorie Mason Center. So I hope that just puts something on your heart. Yeah, tell them. Thank you so much.
Hi, so my name is Crystal, and I'm currently in the shelter, and you guys said there's resources, and there's no resources. There's no resources to do anything. I've been there for almost two years now. I got a job. They told me I no longer qualified for needed services, so I quit my job. Then they told me to go to behavioral health. I went to behavioral health, still in the shelter. So I think you guys should pass it so that we, I could get into permanent housing, I could get a job again, and I could get back to myself instead of being in the shelter. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask the public, please restrain from clapping. We're gonna have, I want to hear from everyone here, but no clapping. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. My name is Erwin Brewer, and I'm a member of Fresno Temple Church of God and Christ. And we've had a problem with unhoused people just in our neighborhood. And, and you know, and everybody knows everything that comes along with it, you know, extra trash, extra uncleanliness. extra trash, extra uncleanliness, that's just a total mess. And City of Fresno has done all they can. We get a promise to get it moved. It gets moved. It comes back in two weeks. And matter of fact, we're scheduled for Thursday this week to be moved, and I bet by Friday they'll be back. And I was just wondering, what do we need to do about that? Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Bob McCloskey, District Five. Just to bring something up real quick. Urban Institute recent study ranks Fresno as like at the bottom of the list, number two hundred and fifty-three of American cities on racial inclusion and economic inclusion. This is a fact. It, it also is a fact that the county has three of the poorest communities, Fresno County, of ten thousand people or more in the entire state of California. That is Parlier, Mandota, and Mr. Magzig in your district, Orange Cove.
Orange Cove is not in my district, but good try.
Oh, anyway, near it. Anyway, you're, you're responsible for trying to ameliorate some of this poverty, aren't you not, sir?
And let me, let me stop you real quick, because Bob, I appreciate you. You're more than welcome to criticize me, but there is no one in this room who's built more affordable housing with their own hands. As you may recall,
I appreciate that.
I rented a nonprofit construction company that sent one hundred and forty affordable housing projects. So as you make your comments, keep that in mind.
That's what baffles me about questioning this, this project. I mean, the board, Steve Brando's impetus, I guess, created the impetus for this, is getting ready to come down hard on encampments, basically move people. Now, they're saying the last thing you want to do is arrest people, but let's face it, some people may get arrested, and that's at the cost thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars a year per inmate in Fresno County Jail. I've done the research. I know what it costs these days. Poverty is violence. We need support, permanent supportive housing. This should be a no-brainer. Come on, guys. This doesn't cost you anything. What is going to cost you is, is housing unhoused folks in the county jails. This is, please support this. Think of how the public's going to view it when you're promoting, Steve, this hard-line resolution, this ordinance, at the same time refusing to support a housing project. Thank you.
I'm going to close the public portion and bring it back to the board on this item. And there was a lot of discussion about what may be legal, what's not legal. So what I want to do, before we start making motions and get too far into discussion, I want to start with our county council and just talk a little bit about the resolution that we have, maybe some modifications that may need to be made, and any additional correspondence we've received.
We did receive, and I know some of the staff saw it, I did not, the letter that came in last night after close of business from HCD expressing their concerns about the resolution that mimic a lot of the thing. On the legal questions, you know, we do have our housing element. The housing element is in process. It's not that it's been rejected by HCD, but they sent a letter of comment back. That's still in process with staff, so we're still working on the housing element with HCD on that. It is true and not true what the applicant is saying in the sense of we have an overall housing obligation that we have to meet. That housing element has to provide for certain programs that HCD will sign off on. Obviously, any project that doesn't go forward, you know, doesn't help us meet those obligations, but we're not committed to have to have this particular project for any, you know, any legal requirement. We no longer have any contractual obligation with Upholdings. Their MOU with us, you know, did expire, although we did support their extension of the HCD funding. I would advise the board that if they decide to either withdraw this application or provide additional time, that we make it clear it's not about this individual location. It's about the funding problem. HCD's application for their extension noted they had something like, not HCD, but Upholdings' application noted they had something like a thirty-two or thirty-four million dollar funding gap for this project. There's lots of talk about the three or six million, but there's been quite a few things that they're still working on trying to get the funding, but they don't have any commitments for. My understanding was staff and the supervisors' intent bringing this forward was to try and reallocate our staff resources to other affordable housing projects, and that's a policy decision for the board.
All right. Thank you. And we may have some more questions for you, but at this time, I want to open it up to board members, Supervisor Brandau. You'd like to make some comments at this time.
All right, thanks. Bernard, do you have a second? Thanks for coming up, Bernard. How's the housing element going?
So we are in process. We did submit a draft housing element to HCD for review. We did receive a response letter in March, and we've been working through, and we've been in constant communication with HCD staff in that process. Really, the, the one thing that's holding up us resubmitting back to the state is identification of sites needed to meet our low and very low allocation requirement. We've been talking with the City of Fresno. They, they initially had some concerns in opposition to some of the sites. So the state has very strict criteria for locating these sites. They have to be in proximity to certain services, and based on that locational criteria, a lot of these sites will, will end up in the metropolitan area. We have identified, your board may recall, earlier this year, we actually brought about a half a dozen sites for rezoning, which are board-approved, but there are still some sites that we need to identify and rezone, so that way when we resubmit, we can show that we have met our allocation requirement. Our expectation is to, you know, in the next thirty to forty-five days, go through that process. We recently had some communications with Fresno over a willingness to reengage over these site locations, so we're hopeful that we can resolve that issue and resubmit back to the state and hopefully get, get our housing element wrapped up, fingers crossed, by the end of the year.
And Bernard, if I could, I mean, the site locations that we're concerned about are in county territory.
That is correct.
We have to identify sites in county territory. Having another site that is in the incorporated city doesn't help us with our housing element, identifying our sites in the county.
You're, you're absolutely correct. The, the awkwardness is that these sites, however, are in the spheres of influence of Fresno. In this case, we even did one in Clovis. So there's coordination that needs to occur, because they're obviously planning for these same areas in some cases for different uses. So it, it's a coordination issue that we're working through right now.
So if this project were not to happen, does this, does that damage units that get applied to the county of Fresno or units that get applied to the city of Fresno?
So, so there's, there's two separations or two distinctions between that. We, we have to plan for and have adequate sites that are zoned for moderate, below moderate, and, and low-income housing units. These are more transi- my understanding, these are more transitional housing or units. We do have regional policies that, that commit us to look for solutions for those types of issues as well. This does not impact our RENA allocation, and, and our draft policy does commit us to look for, I believe it's seventy-six units over the course of an eight-year planning process. And, and just simply because our housing element is not being certified obviously does not prevent us from implementing those programs and policies, which we are currently doing today.
Right. It's exactly what I thought. So the truth is, all of the anger about units being pulled away, all of that anger should be expressed right down the street, because when they backed out of this project, they're pulling the units out of their RENA numbers. They're not, they're not pulling the units out of Fresno County's numbers.
Yeah, again, when we say RENA numbers, these technically are not RENA numbers.
Right.
These are, these are a different type of housing, but they too have the same commitment and obligation to plan and provide resources for this type of transitional housing.
All right. Thanks, Bernard. And then, Amina, where did Amina go? Amina, Jessica, when she spoke, she said that the project hasn't asked Fresno County for funds. Is that true?
No, the project has asked Fresno County for our-
So let me ask it this way. She said that the project has not asked Fresno County for funds. Is that true?
No.
All right, thank you. All right. Perfect. Thanks, Amina. So my concern here is that, is this was, this project was developed from the city of Fresno. We played a very minor role in a supportive role, and then they pulled out of the project. Now, these folks over here, thanks, Amina, now these folks over here have, are trying to elevate us to a key role, and it was a very problematic project to begin with. For instance, I had Steve White. He's not here today. We have a problem. This is right across the street from a county neighborhood. It's serviced, this four-story building would be serviced by a tiny county road. We asked for a traffic study. We asked the Fresno Fire Department for a strategy on how to battle a fi- a four-story fire from this tiny little county road. They told us they didn't need to do it, and yet still, when it moved forward, we played a tiny, we played a supportive role. And now those guys down the street have flown the coop. And you can have a lot of word-salad talk about, oh, they're still engaged, but they're not here today fighting for the project, are they? The reality is, the thing is toast, and I would like to just recognize that in transparent government. So that's what I'm here to do today. So I'm open to any other questions, comments. There's a couple of problematic sentences in the resolution I'm willing to deal with, but at the end of the day, we need to move forward, move on.
Couple of things, I think. So there are entitlements that are on this land, which I can appreciate fully, you know, fully support those entitlements. I'm a private property rights supporter. Where I want to remain focused, I think this body needs to remain focused, is when we made that initial commitment back in twenty-twenty-two, the No Place Like Home funding came with a timeline. That timeline expired. There was an extension that was granted till January of twenty-twenty-five. I would have hoped that this board would have been involved in that process. I know that there was just a support letter that was given from the Department of Behavioral Health, but because of some of the public safety concerns about this location, my office was not made aware specifically about that. And, and maybe it shouldn't have, because I know this is squarely in, in District Two. So I would have liked more conversation about this before the extensions started taking place. And two, since this was a kind of a joint project between the city, the county, and the developer, I would have too hoped that, to see a much firmer commitment from the, from the city of Fresno. And it's important for the county and the city to work together, because anytime there is a project in the city, there's behavioral health support that's given or public health support that's given, because the, the county provides those services. But again, with this particular project, I recognize there's other nuances, and if it is true that the city has really kind of backed away from or pulled that three million dollars of initial commitment, and there's no clear path forward, that is something which is concerning. Any other comments from other board members? All right, Steve, what, what do you propose?
There is a sentence in this resolution that, as I reflect, is not a very good sentence, and I would like to remove it and then make a motion to approve this sentence. And so if anybody has a copy of it in front of them or for my colleagues, in Section One, and this had to do with when we found out that the city was jacking with us, I put in a sentence about future projects at this location, and I would like to remove that, because in all reality, if somebody someday-
Sentence about future projects?
Yeah, about future projects. If somebody someday develops a fantastic project there, I would not be opposed to it. So I would like to remove this sentence in Section One. It says, I'm going to read the whole mini paragraph and tell you the words that I want to remove, that the Board of Supervisors hereby withdraw support for further grant funding for the Libre Commons project or future projects located at this location. I want to strike the words "or future projects." I just don't think that's fair, and I shouldn't have included it in the resolution, and I think I want to strike that and then make a motion to approve-
Supervisor, that's in Section Two. That language is-
Okay, there's a sec- it's in Section One and Section Two. The same three words are in both sections, and so I'd like to strike it in both sections, because I don't want to penalize future projects even at this location. And so I would like to remove those sentences. Does that make more sense now, Dan? It's in both sections. Okay? And then I'll make a motion to approve this resolution. All right, we have a motion. Is there a second to that?
Is there a second to that motion?
So, Mr. Chairman, so just, so you know, the resolution was not in the packet, so I distributed it just moments ago, so they may be reading it to absorb what Supervisor Brandau is asking to amend.
Got it. And if you, if the board members need a few moments, you're more than welcome to, to take that. I know that it was on file, and so we could, that's something that we could download.
It was on file with the clerk.
Yeah. And I'm going to ask a final time. Is there a second to that motion? If not, that motion will die, and we need to have some additional discussion then by, by the board on, on their thoughts and observations. I have, I have some thoughts, unless if, Brian? Okay. So the extension was granted, and one of the things that we heard from Jessica is she believes that she just needs a little bit more time. I'm willing to give, I'm open to more time and to allow that additional funding to come together. But again, if, I don't want to extend the No Place Like Home funding a second time. So the funding needs to be put together within that timeframe, which I believe is going to expire in January of twenty-twenty-five. And that, the county, of course, sent a support letter for that. So that's what I think is most appropriate, is to allow for that extension. But I will say this, when it comes to the project itself, there are entitlements in place. If there are public safety concerns about how to fight fire at this location, I cannot support any project that creates a future public safety hazard. And so if, if there's an issue that needs to be dealt with, with widening that road, the developer needs to work with the city of Fresno to make that happen, because this is a city of Fresno project. So that is, that's absolutely critical, critical and a non-starter for me. The, the project has to be serviceable, fully serviceable, by ambulance services as well as the fire department. And I have some additional comments, but I want to stop and see if any other board members have anything they want to say. So here's my, here's my, I have a resolution, which I mocked up on the fly, so I'm going to try to read through this as quickly as I can. It takes portions of what Supervisor Brandau has done, and, and I've made a lot of modifications. So whereas the Fresno County Board of Supervisors through Resolution twenty-two dash zero zero four authorizes staff to participate in round four of funding under No Place Like Home on January fourth of twenty-twenty-two, and whereas the application was prepared by Upholdings LLC for Libre Commons project located at sixty-three West Shaw Avenue, Fresno, California, a hundred and twenty-three-unit multifamily project with forty-two units dedicated to persons with mental illness or chronic homelessness, with onsite supportive services to be provided by the county, and whereas the project was awarded eleven point nine million in No Place Like Home funding in June of twenty-twenty-two, and the city of Fresno further committed three million, and whereas the project is estimated to cost fifty-six million in total, with nine million required in local funding commitment to make the project competitive for necessary state funds. To date, the project has not achieved its funding goals and commitments. Further, the city of Fresno has withdrawn its, its support, and the project has, appears to be no longer viable. And whereas the No Place Like Home funding will expire on January first of twenty-twenty-five, and an extension will need to be approved to move the project forward. Now, therefore, the Fresno County Board of Supervisors resolves as follows. The Libre Commons project must demonstrate committed funding sufficient to fully fund the project prior to January first of twenty-twenty-five. Section Two, should the project fail to secure and demonstrate sufficient funding to fully fund the project by January first of twenty-twenty-five, the Board of Supervisors withdraws its support from the No Place Like Home grant funding for the project. Section thirty-two should read, should the project fail to secure and demonstrate sufficient funding to fully fund the project by January first of twenty-twenty-five, the Chairman of the Fresno County Board of Supervisors is authorized and directed to act on behalf of the county to execute and deliver any and all documents required or deem necessary- and deliver any and all documents required or deemed necessary to formalize the withdrawal from the No Place Like Home grant for the project. And finally, it would end the foregoing, it ends with, if this is passed by the board on today or not. So that would be my motion. So it wouldn't withdraw our support today, but it allows this extension to run until January of 2025. But if there is no commitment of funding, then at that point, the board would withdraw support, instead of extent, continuing to extend the project, the No Place Like Home funding, I should say, for the project. That's my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Singing none, we're going to do a roll call vote.
Chairman Magsick?
Aye.
Supervisor Mendez?
Aye.
Supervisor Brandau?
No.
Supervisor Macheko?
Yes.
Supervisor Quintero?
Yes.
4-1, motion carries. Supervisor Brandau voting no.
All right.
That concludes all consent items that were pulled from this morning. We, we go back to your regular agenda, which is Item 5 under Supervisor Brandau. Conduct first hearing to amend the Fresno County Ordinance Code Title 10 to add Chapter 10.70 unlawful camping and obstruction of public rights of way, way reading of the ordinance in its entirety, and set the second hearing for August 20, 2024.
Amina, the floor is yours, and then we're going to turn it over to, or actually, would you like to start first, Supervisor? All right, Supervisor Brandau, the floor is yours.
And I would like to say, I'm just going to be very brief, because I didn't figure that last, when I put that last item on the agenda, I had no concept it was going to take this much time. So I'm going to shorten this one. When I was a Fresno City Councilman, I passed a no camping ordinance, so I think most everybody in the room knows that. And it was quickly put on a shelf because of a ruling out of Boise, Idaho. And then, a second court ruling from Grants Pass, Oregon, went to the United States Supreme Court, where the Supreme Court overruled the earlier Boise ruling and said that no camping ordinances are legal, they're not discriminating against homeless people.
That's all right.
I'll just put that in my own words, is that Steve and Buddy can't go out and camp, just like somebody that's homeless can't go out and camp. And that Supreme Court recognized it. It was not discriminating, said nobody can go out and camp on these properties. And so then, they also made the declaration that the agency, the city, or the county is not in a role where they have to provide a bed for any certain individual homeless person. So that was also something that the Boise ruling had stated. So in the seven years that transpired, even people who were previously against no camping ordinances realized that they are a valuable tool. So for instance, the city of San Francisco came around to where they joined the Grants Pass, Oregon lawsuit in support of no camping ordinances. So did the city of Seattle. And apparently, out of nowhere, so does Governor Gavin Newsom. So a lot has changed. People are realizing, even in very progressive cities, that sometimes you need some of these laws to help people help themselves, and help people move towards services when they can obstinately refuse. So when I first found out about the Supreme Court ruling, I thought, you know, we don't have anything like that at Fresno County. Now that they're viable, it's worth talking about again. I connected first, first with Sheriff Zenoni, who's in the room today and can talk about this, and I'd like for him to talk right after Amina, if that's possible. But then we start talking with Amina, and she agreed that we don't have a lot about these types of things. And she even took it further and said, there's some other parts that we, of our code that we need to tune up, our ordinances in regard to these issues. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Amina to describe all the work that she's done.
Thank you, Supervisor. Good morning. Amina Flores Becker, Deputy CAO over homelessness response efforts for the county of Fresno. The item before you is an important step in formalizing a process that is one piece of a much larger effort by the county to address and ultimately end homelessness in our region. The purpose of the proposed ordinance is to protect public health, safety, and welfare for all county residents, and to discourage and prevent unlawful encampments from interfering with the public's right to use public spaces, and to accomplish these objectives in a manner that preserves the dignity and safety of all residents of Fresno County, including those who are unhoused. The county has worked tirelessly on addressing homelessness. This work has included collaborating with all of our cities. That, the collaborative response takes a lot of time and resources. While this ordinance provides our sheriff's office with another tool to resolve encampments, it is important to note that the county has been doing encampment resolution for years. I especially want to highlight that for the past several years, the county has taken the position that encampment resolution should be done with a compassionate and humane approach. To clarify, the first and most important step in our process is connecting the human beings affected by our encampment resolution, or process with outreach services. Your board recently expanded those efforts by approving an amendment to our outreach contract, which includes a pilot program that directs our outreach partner to offer all of the individuals being displaced by county encampment resolution action with a temporary motel voucher with the goal of them prioritizing those individuals for direct outreach services in a more accessible and safer setting. This ordinance also formally communicates that the county prefers to have the impacted individuals be connected to shelter, treatment, and other necessary services to assist them in exiting homelessness, rather than be penalized for establishing an encampment on public or private property. In conjunction with this ordinance, the CAO's office is currently working to finalize a policy that outlines the logistics of our encampment resolution process. This policy will be a guide for county staff who work on encampment resolution, and will direct staff to act with a sense of urgency while preserving dignity. I also want to take this opportunity to thank our sheriff's office, in particular Sergeant Scott Wyshar and Deputy Isaac Cervantes, for their compassionate approach in their interactions with the unhoused population and the enforcement piece of the county's encampment resolution process. I believe that it is because of their approach that we almost always get voluntary compliance with an order to vacate the premises without the need of any punitive action against the displaced individuals. This ordinance will give our deputies another tool in, in their tool belt to ensure the safety of all county residents, including those who are currently unhoused. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from staff? Supervisor Brandau, any, any final comments?
No, but Sheriff Zenoni was such a big part of this, I'd like for him to share as well, and then we can hear from the public.
All right, Sheriff Zenoni.
Good morning, Chairman Magsick, members of the Board of Supervisors. Nice to also thank everyone standing behind me here in line, who's here today, as advocates for unhoused community, come and speak their voices. I know when we had our press conference a couple of weeks ago, it was very informative, and the information that we shared, I think, is important. What Amina said regarding current encampments on private property, the sheriff's office in the county of Fresno, whether you're in the city of Fresno, city of Orange Cove, or city of Mendota, if there's an eviction for an encampment, it's conducted by the sheriff's office. So we're very familiar with the process of removing encampments through court orders. And as Amina said, Sergeant Wyshar and Deputy Cervantes are key components in this. And this is something that the sheriff's office, we do probably three, four, or five of these a year, under court order on private property. So we're very well-versed in the process and what needs to be done, and absolutely being compassionate to these individuals. As we talked about at the press conference, we don't just post a five-day notice at an encampment and show up on day five and, and remove people. There's a process. People are given plenty of lead time. And in many cases, we attempt to do our best to get the resources available out to these encampments, so we can give people options when that day comes for the eviction, just to name a few, such as the Pavarello House, the Rescue Mission, disabled veterans, and things of that nature. And there's many more that I'm not going to go on and list here, because we're stretched for time. But we do that, and we offer services, and we try to get people help, because we understand that just putting them in jail, or arresting them, or making them part of the criminal justice system is not going to solve this problem, per se. You know, when we talk about this ordinance, it applies to our public areas. I don't believe it's going to have a significant impact on our resources. And I say that because a lot of times now, we get dispatched to these calls of individuals that are a public nuisance, or that are camped or set up on a public location. But we don't have the, the resources or the tools to remove them. And many times, we'll talk to them, and we'll get them to move on down the road, but really, we're just pushing the problem along, and we're not solving the problem. As we've said, as many people have said, this is another tool that we have. Right now, we don't have that effective ability to remove these individuals, you know? We can tell them to leave, and they'll go down the road to a different location, or move along. But is that solving our problem? No, it's not. But we also understand that in order to solve this problem, we have to have resources. We have to have things available for individuals to, places for them to live, programs for them to check into, and things that will help get them off the streets and help them not be homeless. But with that said, there's a responsibility on these individuals as well. And in many people that I've met with, who've talked about their time from being unhoused and being placed in jail, and obviously for criminal allegations and criminal charges other than just being unhoused, many of them have told me that the fact that they were on probation and had consequences, and actually knew that they were going to be part of the legal system, that helped many of them change their lives. And I think that's something we need to look at here, is this is something that we will use as a last resort. If we have to take legal action against them, we will. People in our community, they shouldn't have to be subject to walking down the street and stepping over people who are camping on sidewalks. You shouldn't be going to public shopping centers and having individuals who are unhoused yell at you, harass you, or camp out in front of stores and, you know, make those stores less desirable to shop at or to give your business to. We have to have a balance here. And I believe the sheriff's office, in our previous dealings with unhoused individuals in our communities, and the removal of encampments, I think we understand that balance very well. But it is important to have that balance. People have to be held accountable to the laws. People have to understand that certain things are just not acceptable, and personal responsibility is a part of this. When we look at the city of Grants Pass versus Johnson, the Supreme Court case, that's a ruling. Law enforcement, we deal with legal rulings and how we apply the law, and how we take action, legal action, against individuals. Look at Governor Gavin Newsom, his executive order. I think it's time that individuals in our community, at our state, our local, and even our federal and Supreme Court level, I think we've had enough, and I think we understand that there needs to be some change. And with this tool, I believe it will help our deputies make some positive changes in our community, and hopefully get individuals in our unhoused community to understand that, hey, there's a legal consequence to this now, and hopefully incentivize them to make some changes. And also, on the city, county, and state level, there needs to be some funding allocated for housing, for services, and for programs, so that these people have options. Because when they have options, I believe many of them will choose a different lifestyle. But without options, it becomes difficult. Where do we put them? Booking them into jail, as Bob said, at $36,000 a year, I do not believe someone for a county ordinance violation would remain in jail for an entire year. I find that highly unlikely. But that is not the solution either. Putting people in jail who are unhoused, there has to be other solutions. So with that, what I'd like to say is, if this ordinance is passed today, I do support the ordinance. If it is passed, we will have to make sure that we educate and inform those individuals in our unhoused community of the ordinance, because many of them don't have the resources or maybe the ability to see how the ordinance reads, what the consequences are. So it would have to be somewhat of a warming-up period, so to speak, before any legal action would be taken. But I believe once these people understand what the ordinance is, and they're out there, I believe they're going to find different avenues to probably avoid legal action, and hopefully, you know, being placed into the criminal justice system. With that, I am here to answer any questions.
Questions for the sheriff? Sheriff, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'm going to open it up to the public. I would ask if the public could limit their comments to two minutes each, so we can hear from as many people as possible. Thank you.
Hey, my name is Jacob Zalian. I'm the pastor of Set Free Church. We are located in Sanger, but we're not your average church. We have a ministry, we help people to get off the streets. We go around to these campsites, and we get them off the streets, we feed them, and we have, we run a three-phase program. I have a ranch where we send them to for the first phase, where we detox them for about a month to two months, then I bring them back to Sanger, to one of our living quarters, and where we disciple them for six months and train them up in work therapy. After that phase, there's a third phase they could go to, where we help them to get jobs, we put them through schooling, and we have our third phase where they all work, and they're living in the place where they're saving up money. I support this act, because I myself used to be on the streets. I was a tweaker, I was on dope, you could look at my record, over 27 felonies. And back in 2011, you couldn't post up in a tent and smoke dope and slam heroin, and now you can. And so, you know, it, it's so easy to stay there, because they're comfortable there. And we have to make it uncomfortable, so that they'll want to change. But the concerns about supporting this is that you just, if you were to support it without opening up options for them, you know, you kind of like are putting them in a spot where, where are they going to get help? Are they going to go to one of these county programs? That's a revolving door, that doesn't really help them to transform their life? I suggest that you guys partner with nonprofits that look at them, study the nonprofits, see what success rate they have, see what they're doing, how are they transforming these people's lives? Getting motels on the side of Parkway over there doesn't work. I'm not saying that they're dirt, but sweeping dirt under a rug doesn't clean it up. You know, we just push them all to a hotel where they're still doing drugs, because we go out and we minister to them. So we got to have facilities that are out there, that are helping them to get sober, because I would say that about 90% of everybody that is out there is on drugs or alcohol. And for those that are, have mental illness, their mental illness is because of drugs and alcohol. So that's the thing that we need to help out, is with the drugs and alcohol.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. And I want to thank Sheriff Zenoni for what I feel is a more compassionate approach than the people down the street. So I, I feel a little more comforted with that. My name is Cindy Pemino, I am with Fresno Homeless Union, and I'm also a ministry coordinator with Christ Helping Hands with Fresno Church. I'm in total opposition of this ordinance. It's downright inhumane, and it is a blatant violation of the Eighth Amendment. Criminalization, okay, we have families out there, they're going to be torn apart, that's a fact. We have vets that have fought for our country, that have fought for our country. I don't want to see a vet in cuffs or get cited ever for being homeless. Many have worked in this community, they have fallen on hard times, and they have served in their community, and these are some of our homeless. They are not all dope fiends. There's many with mental illness that creates terrible barriers for them, and there's many with drug addictions. We need many services, much more than we have here in Fresno. I do propose safe camps. The lady behind me had one for a year, it worked well. I don't know what the pushback is on it with the elected officials in this city or county, but I urge you to put safe camps in every district. So I just, I need to leave you with Proverbs 14:21. This is how I feel about all this. The poor is he hated, even of his own neighbor. But the rich have many friends. He that despises his neighbor sinneth, but he that have mercy on the poor, happy is he. May God bless you all, and I, I just am praying for this not to push through.
Hello, and thank you. Des Martinez with We Are Not Invisible. So I do want to thank Sheriff, wherever he went, ran off. A lot of the things that he said, it sounded like he really opposed to what you guys are bringing forward, but it felt like he had to say that he agreed with you, because he does work for you. But, I mean, I agree with him, you know, they are compassionate, they're different than Fresno PD, trust and believe. I've been at the encampment sweeps for the, with the county. They do pull up, and they give us time, because they realize there's a lot of mental health, there's elders, disabled. So they do give us time. It's not as bad as I've experienced in the city. But I still want to know when you're going to bring out the half a million dollar chassis that you guys bought for the encampment sweeps? That could have been money for a tiny home, I'm just saying. You guys talk about resources that we don't utilize. I would love you to hear what resources we are not utilizing. You say it a lot, we have resources, we have resources, but you guys are not taking them. Which ones? Be specific, please, because you're very specific when you, when you want to criminalize us. You're being very specific on the amount of time for jail, on if you're going to fine us, all these other things, right? So be specific on the resources that you state we do not use. Your resources that you give in the county are temporary, 30 days here, 60 days there, 90 days there. But you allow people to stay for three years in your shelters, your low-barrier shelters for three years, when you got mothers and childrens and fathers out here on the streets, and I'm calling you guys all the time, and I'm begging for another voucher to get an extension- extension. This is ridiculous. Department of Social Services only allows 15 days for children to be in a shelter, but you allow people to be for three years at your county shelter. Make this make sense. We're going to allow pimps and drug dealers and sex traffickers to remain housed in shelters when we need shelters for the elders, for the disabled, for the children that are on the streets? By incarcerating these parents behind me, what are you going to do with the children? Stick them back in CPS in a broken system that they've already come from? Like, we can't go backwards. We got to go forwards, please. Is that my time?
Hi. My name is Jaime Castaneda. I'm representing for Des Martinez. And, uh, I want to say, I know I have learning disability, but...
If you guys could just bear with him real quick.
Is there a way you guys could get this fentanyl off the streets? Because a lot of people are dying, a lot of brothers and sisters out on the streets. And, and, and I just, we don't need that in the streets. Forget about all that fentanyl and all that drugs and getting high on like that. And all the homeless too. Where they going to go? That's it.
Okay. Hi. My name is Crystal and I'm with the Fresno Homeless Union. Like I said, still in the shelter. Well, criminalizing, criminalizing the homeless, that's not going to be good because how are you going to fine somebody $1,000 that can't even pay it? And then when that builds up and builds up every time they get fined, then when they eventually get a job, what's going to happen? You guys are going to be taking their money. Then they're going to not going to be able to pay their bills or get food because the cost of food is going up, for one. It's just a repeat cycle. Throwing someone in jail over it, especially someone that's not a gang member or a criminal. You know what that's going to do? That's just going to make that person a gang member or criminal by the time they get out of there. How does that work? That's not fair to that person. I think you guys should just work together with the nonprofits. Des has good ideas, but nobody wants to work with her. You house, you put someone in a shelter and then you expect them to just go and be able to be back in society again, give them keys, but they don't know how to pay their bills. They don't know how to manage anything. All they know how to do is pay for their drugs, do their drugs, and that's about it. So what are they going to do? They're going to end up right back on the streets because they're, they'd rather pay for their drugs instead of paying their bills or anything like that. They don't have no treatment to get into the permanent housing. So you guys are just giving them keys, throwing them out there to the wolves, hoping they're going to survive. No, they're all going to be back on the streets. They keep saying that they housed over 12,000 people. Where? Where? Because there's still 4,000 people on the streets like there was a couple of years ago. I think you guys should really think about it. Think about all the treatments that they need and stuff. Thank you.
Good morning, Board members. My name is Jason Crawford. I'm a public defender for Fresno County. I'm very honored to work for the county in that capacity. I'm here today because I feel that I'm an important stakeholder in the criminal justice process. And the first thing I want to do is I want to acknowledge the board members and the policymakers here. I am a lawyer, but I believe in the Constitution and I believe that policy decisions should be made by elected officials. I do want to talk about the ruling in Grants Pass briefly, again, just from the perspective of a public defender working for the county. That ruling essentially, what it did in an opinion by Justice Gorsuch, a Trump-appointed judge, is it put all of the tools in policymakers' toolboxes, including ordinances that can ban certain forms of conduct and not status. In other words, the board would not be punishing the status of homelessness, the state of existing, but instead camping. And I want to again acknowledge the board's efforts as policymakers to deal with this incredibly difficult topic. I do not claim to have expertise in that area and I do want to acknowledge what people have done. What I'd like to pay attention to, however, is Section 10.70.030. I am concerned with some of the drafting in the language and I've asked the board to consider that. By its terms, that ordinance prohibits people from, quote, "sitting, lying, or sleeping." So I would just ask the board at this point, and again, I defer to policymakers, think about hypotheticals, what that could mean. A child in a crib in Courthouse Park where I work. And I acknowledge that this statute or ordinance applies to everybody equally, but it may cause enforcement problems for the county. The courts have held that there is sometimes expressive components, street musicians, people dealing with elections. That type of conduct may be criminalized. I'd ask you to talk to public defenders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, good morning. My name is Linda Tubak. I'm a volunteer with the Fresno Homeless Union and I'm a resident of District Five. I'm here opposing the ordinance and concerned that you withdraw it. I think it's well established that the cause of homelessness and the continual increase in homelessness in our county is poverty, low wages primarily. People cannot afford their rent, nor can they afford, as you've heard over and over again, the deposits necessary to rent a place. So, you say that homeless people should be accountable for their homelessness. Who's accountable for the poverty in Fresno County and the fact that Fresno County is at the bottom of the counties in the state? So is Fresno City. Three of the poorest cities in the state are in Fresno County. Who's accountable for that? And you as elected leaders need to be about spending our hard-earned tax dollars on the services that people need to thrive in this county. That means you need to be staffing up social services. You hear over and over and over again that people cannot access services, they cannot access rehab. Who's responsible for this? Who's accountable for this? You are, as our elected officials, in control of our resources. Now, you know, I can see when I volunteer that you've pushed homeless people out of small encampments where people feel safe into the parking lots of the shopping centers. So that's where I go to distribute water, just cruise by a shopping center and that's the only place where people can, can sit with shade without being harassed in a park. So where do we go from here? It's time that we learn from a city like Tulare that has set up safe camps as a transitional means to ending homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. My name is Andrea Robertson and I'm a person that's in one of your resources. Being in this resource, it helped me get my paperwork together, even started helping me build my confidence as being a mother and being a black woman. But when you get a letter like this saying, okay, we're going to help you, but you only have this certain amount of time and then you have to go and you don't have no help after that, then you're lost. And then you don't have no choice to go back to the things that was going on again. So I don't want to take too much of your time, but all I'm asking is for long-term housing because a lot of us are not, we don't, a lot of us is not on drugs. A lot of us is actually trying and we're steadily put in a position to where we have no choice. And I'm a black mother that don't have a choice. I'm in one of your resources and they're telling me within a week that me and mine have to go. Where are we going to go? So, thank you for hearing me.
Brandy Nusviegas, thank you. I think with this challenging issue, we need to look at all research and local experts and also have a lived experience board with those who've been experiencing this to come to the cable for effective solutions because research shows that encampment and sit-down sleep bans do not accomplish decreasing homelessness. Not 80, 90% do not have addiction. Studies show that the majority don't. A recent extensive study showed that the number one reason for homelessness in California is lack of affordable housing, which was addressed. And you're aware of our lack. There was claims that people who are unhoused are refusing services, but since the city came out with their introduction, experts, people who are closely working in, like Jody Kex aside with FM C O C and Phil Sky, both noted that people are trying, that there is a lack of services. And if you go to Maps, which is a lot of people are told to go there, there are people waiting in line all day long and might not even be seen by a caseworker. I know many people who have gone to Maps and are doing what they, they're told to do and are waiting. I have friends who have, who work in county schools that have students. Ask me for resources for families that are about to lose their housing. And Laura Moreno in 2022 mentioned that 70% of the homeless population are families. We need to address issues with the shelters to ensure that they are helping people and have oversight. We need to have the, the county demand funding for housing for our state, from our state and federal government. One of the issues that we have is that criminalization may make it harder to escape homelessness. We also need services. Some people have mentioned, when I ask people for what would help, would need help, hi, we're talking, help with services like jobs and providing platforms to be able to do jobs, to be able to get jobs and other services would be more effective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dan Nickerson. I'm a resident of Fresno County. I'm also a 22-year veteran of the Air Force. I want you to know that a lot of this talk is about people on drugs. When I moved here three years ago from Illinois, I could not get an apartment without having my son and E2 and the Coast Guard co-sign for it. That's how hard it is to get into just a space to live. And now as I go out on the streets and I, and I serve the unhoused, I see many of my veteran brothers and sisters out there. They're not drug addicts. They just have different problems that they can't be in housing for whatever reason. And a lot of it has to do with monetary. So when I look at your, your ordinance, specifically Section 1070 dot 070, and it states a violation of this, of this chapter is declared to be a public nuisance in, in Section A, also the violation in Section B with the fines and the jail time. But really what catches my eye is Section C that says, "As an alternative to a fine or jail sentence, the county would encourage the court to grant diversion or probation with a condition, the offender complete a rehabilitation program or treatment plan." So if this is actually an ordinance that's a hammer on drug users that are unhoused, that are populating our streets, our sidewalks, and our parks, then let's make it that. And let's take out all the rest of the stuff about sitting in a park, standing in a park, laying in a park. Because if we want to go after rehab, then that's what this should address. I think this is a rushed ordinance. I think that the language in the first part of it says that I can't go sit in a park. And if I can go sit in a park, then you're discriminating against my brother and sister vet that maybe is there with a roll-up sleeping bag. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Saida Ramos. I am a policy advocate with Leadership Counsel for Justice and Accountability. This ordinance proposed is not the solution to supporting unhoused individuals. According to Sections 3 and 4 of Governor Newsom's executive order, local governments must act humanely when removing encampments and the California Inter-Agency Council of Homelessness will provide local governments guidance and technical assistance for local governments to follow when developing the programs for the unhoused community. On their webpage, the CalICH states, "To ensure the safety, wellness, and dignity of persons experiencing homelessness, CalICH remains committed to supporting state and local partners and using person-centered, trauma-informed, and evidence-based approaches to address homelessness. Furthermore, HCD will make additional funding approaches to address homelessness available for encampment resolution program, which can assist local jurisdictions in providing meaningful paths to safe and stable housing. The county should show a higher level of urgency and funding efforts to ensure that shelters are adequately funded with sufficient vets and mental health services, as well as affordable housing available to all residents, instead of hastily creating an ordinance that will only cause more suffering to the unhoused. You must begin with prioritizing funding for policies and programs that are preventive, restorative, and compassionate. This ordinance should not pass until we are certain that the county can follow its duty as a public agency to affirmatively further fair housing and demonstrate that it offers displaced unhoused residents a path towards secure and stable, affordable housing." Thank you.
Hi, Leslie Martinez. I'm a resident of Fresno County and just, there are over 4,000 unhoused children that are, that live in Fresno County. That's like 4,000 families. Those are real people that we're not discussing. And I also, we were talking earlier about the housing element that is still, from my understanding, you, we're all still revising it. I don't think that the housing element currently has enough programs and policies or money set aside to actually direct some of the issues that residents are bringing up around how we are, how those resources get funded. I also would ask you to look at the budget for the different departments that have, that are responsible for allocating these resources and really wonder if maybe that's where some of the changes need to happen. Maybe we need to put more funding into some of these departments that are desperately trying to address the problem and are not getting backup from the board. So again, we are in a position with the housing element where you could really ask staff to figure out programs, policies, and also put money towards some of the issues that folks are bringing up today. So again, asking you to not approve.
Thank you. And with that, Bob McCloskey is going to be the last speaker on this particular topic. Typically, we limit comments to 15 minutes per item, which we've exceeded, but this is very important. So Bob McCloskey will be the last speaker. But no, no, sir, you're, you're next. You're next.
So I've lived in Fresno my entire life, born and raised. I've lived in Brandau's District Two for the last eight years. I don't have anything pre-written, but I'll try to keep this brief. Over the last year, I have begun attending meetings both here to this board and to the city council. I have spoken to both over a variety of issues. And I just wanted to say that what has been made clear to me just within the last year is that as our elected officials, y'all don't hear us. Y'all don't listen to us. Even just last Monday, we spoke for four hours in opposition. Many of us here were just there, four hours speaking in opposition to what is essentially the exact same ordinance. And yet, four hours of opposition and it was passed 7-0. And here we are again, speaking in opposition. And I'm just asking you, as our elected officials, as our representatives, represent us, your constituents, represent our wants and needs that we are telling you here today. The unhoused folks that we are talking about today are also your constituents. So as our representatives, represent us. It is your job. That is why we elected you. That is why you are here and we are telling you our wants and our needs. And it seems like we're just blatantly being ignored. So please, do your jobs.
Just to be clear, everybody talks about drugs. Well, the Point in Time Count finds that 40, 40, maybe 50% of the people on the streets are using some type of substance, alcohol or drugs. Many of them are also mentally ill, which is an illness, by the way. And that's probably not the correct word anymore, but substance abuse is an illness and it's not being treated. There's very few drug rehab counselors. There's very few programs in the county and we all know it. You talk about drugs. I go down there to Pavarello, dropping people off or giving rides or going over there helping people and walk up to the gate and there's a gentleman sitting there. He says, "Hey, hey, white boy, nice boots." I go, "Yeah, yeah, whatever." He goes, "What do you want? I'll, I'll get you anything." My point is, the Fresno PD, the sheriff's department don't do anything about drug dealers. They don't care because they actually prefer people to be on drugs in the streets. Meth is a horrible drug. You guys, the city and the county are letting it flood the streets. It's so damn cheap. But just to clarify, the other 60% out there are elderly, disabled, and poor. You guys talk about Dr. King all the time. Well, he said poverty is violence and we all know it is. What you're doing is persecuting a lot of elderly, poor people. 50% of the people in California are over the age of 50, according to U.S. San Francisco, University of San Francisco study. It also found that poverty is the main cause of unhoused, of homelessness. As I mentioned, Parlay, Mendota, and Orange Cove are some of the three poorest cities in the entire state. Fresno ranks last in racial inclusion. Don't contribute to institutionalized racism, please. Let's stop this.
Thank you, Bob. I'm going to close the public portion and bring it back to the board for... I'm going to close the public portion and bring it back to the board for some additional comments. Just a couple of things I want to point out, and I appreciate. A few years ago, the state legislature, in their wisdom, thought it would be wise to decriminalize drug use. And on its face, you know, it sounds reasonable because a lot of people who are addicted to drugs, it is, it's an illness, and there needs to be treatment for them. But effectively, what ended up happening is the ability of judges to assign people to rehabilitation went away too. And so now, we have a lot of drug dealers where if you get caught with drugs, you're not able to lock them up. You basically issue a ticket to them. So we need reform, and we need to give tools to our police department, our sheriff's deputies, and that needs to be done statewide. Something else, too, needs to take place. Right now, the state of California is closing more and more prisons, and a lot of these people are ending up on our streets. If the state wants to close prisons, they need to fund programs that allow these people to rehabilitate their lives. And individuals who've committed crimes, I'm one who believes if you've committed the crime, you need to do the time because there are victims out there who also have to suffer, suffer and live the rest of their life being a victim, but they overcome that. So there's definitely a lot of blame to go around. I'm one who has a background in criminology, a master's degree in criminology. I used to teach it at Fresno State. And, but you know what? I am just one person. And to the comments about hearing, we hear you. You're here in this room. We absolutely hear you. But we represent about 1.1 million people. Each and every one of us up here has been elected by the individuals who live in our districts. And I can tell you, people in my district, what they want is they want to see a basket of solutions to deal with the homeless problem out there. It's going to require more housing. It's going to require more rehabilitation programs. But it's also going to require us giving additional tools to law enforcement because there are some people who absolutely are harassing members of the public. I don't want to see homeless people in parks when kids want to go out there and play. That is not appropriate. And so as a society, we have to have norms. And we need to be doing more to get back to norms and allowing the public to be able to enjoy public spaces. But there's no one solution to fix these problems, but we absolutely all have to work together. That's, that's a certainty. So with that, Supervisor Brandau, do you have any additional comments you'd like to make?
Well, I do, and maybe some of our other colleagues do as well. I would like to address just a few things. Not everybody, but people talked about needing more funding. And about two weeks ago, after the Supreme Court made their ruling, Governor Newsom came out and declared that every county needs to create a strategy, including cities needed to create a strategy that adopt things like the no camping ordinance. So however, he didn't attach any additional funding to that. I would love to see that. You know, if he's really supportive, like he says he is, I'd like to see more funding come for that. Now, that being said, there's not enough funding. There's never enough funding. And it doesn't fall, it's not a role of the United States government or the states to provide a house for every single person. I could see the day where that changes. But right now, under our United States Constitution, we're, it's not our role to provide funding for everybody in all circumstances to have a house. And that's somewhat where the state of California has got that crossed over, and they've got a good chunk of the population believing that that's part of the role of us five up here and the folks down the street and all of our government officials. But it's not that role. However, Sheriff Zanoni talked about it. Amina talked about it. She did a great job. She could have gone on for many more minutes talking about all the things that we do to try to help people. But it's never enough, and there's not enough funding. If we took all the money for roads and everything else that we need to accomplish, and we still put it in all in homelessness, it's not enough funding. So we got to get over that really high bar that some folks want to hold us to. We do what we can. We do have a lot of funding. We do have a lot of resources. And I agree with some of the comments that people are taking advantage of resources, but there are, that there are still resources that not everybody's taking advantage of. And we're hoping that the no camping ordinance will give a firm push to some people to take advantage of some of these services. Now, the only other thing that I want to comment on is a response to the defense attorney back here in the back, and thank you for working for Fresno County. We appreciate that. And we trust you to do a great job to help people. And you need to trust our law enforcement community to be able to make the distinction between somebody who's camping and a musician. Okay? So just to come up and say this could be used against musicians, it shows that you have no faith in your colleagues on the other side of law enforcement that have to make these critical decisions. And I happened, after many conversations with Sheriff Zanoni on this issue, I completely trust him. Amina talked about how wonderful they are. Even Des Martinez talked about how we do it much more compassionately in Fresno County. That's going to continue. This isn't about sweeping people off the street. This is about a very small subset of very obstinate people who do things that hurt our businesses. They hurt parents who have to send their children down the street to school and walk alone down the street, very difficult crunch time for many of our citizens. And this just simply addresses that small subset of very obstinate people. And we have to say to them, wouldn't you prefer to go down and begin the process, as challenging as it is, to take advantage of some of these services? And so with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve this ordinance change, this ordinance resolution.
We have a motion on the table from Supervisor Brandau. Is there a second to that motion? We've got a second. And with that, just real quick, further discussion, based upon the items that were brought up, you still feel that the definitions that are listed in the ordinance are still technically accurate and not too broad?
Correct.
All right. That's good enough for me. So we have a motion and a second. All in. Yes, Supervisor Quintero.
I just wanted to make a few comments, and I want to thank all the speakers that came forward and shared your thoughts. And I just, in seeing the city council meetings, I noticed a lot of faces are here today that went and spoke at city council with the same concerns. Just wanted to offer a few thoughts on my part is that, you know, over, I grew up in Fresno, was born here, never left. The thing that I've seen in talking to a lot of people over the past few years has been, you know, basically the general comment is, you know, this isn't the Fresno County that I grew up in. Or this isn't the Fresno County that I moved to. A lot of things have changed, and just as, as it's done in the rest of the country. But they're talking in particular about Fresno County because they live here. People live here, raise their families here. And so one of their, of course, their big concerns is, is how to deal with the homeless, what solutions are there. And we talk about those, those solutions in terms of what the county's been doing and the services that are being offered. The, I can tell you that when there's a homeless encampment and our team goes out there, I mean, and the homeless team, one of the things that they're bound to do is they're, they're asking the homeless, "Would you like, would you like housing? Would you like rehabilitation? Can we help you in any way?" And they say no, and they just move on.
That's a lie.
And, well, you had your turn.
Bob, the public portion's closed.
You had your turn. I'm asking for mine.
You're lying.
Bob, let me tell you something. There's a lot of stuff that you say that I don't agree with, but I let you say it. Sometimes I stop you, but right now, public portion's closed. Allow Sal to speak. Thank you.
And regardless, you know, I mean, this is, these are some of the comments that I get. So with all due respect to you, Bob, you know, it's my turn. And, and so those services are offered. Many, many folks that have lived, that, in the, in the homeless are no longer feel comfortable being inside an apartment. They sleep in the hallway. They just don't feel comfortable. They, they're not secure. And, and then they feel that, that the services that are being provided aren't enough, and some of them will try it and leave. So everybody is trying to do their part to, to help and, and offer solutions. We hear, I hear from elderly folks say, "I'm afraid to go shopping because I might get accosted at the shopping center, or the food I bought at the grocery store is going to get stolen when I go out to, to put my groceries in the car." So those are the, the folks that we're trying to reach out and help, and help that are, that are in the, in the, in the homeless community. The ones that, that also sit in front of the, the businesses where folks are afraid to go into the store, afraid that they'll get accosted when they come out. And so this, this also hurts our neighbors, our small, our small businesses that are struggling to keep their doors open, and there isn't a solution to that. So, you know, there, there's, there's a multitude of things that, that people have concerns for their children. They don't, you know, they don't really walk home from school anymore. You don't see that too much. They get picked up by their, by their parents because they're afraid that, that the children might get accosted going home. And it's not just the homeless. There's, they're also getting fights with, with other students. But it's just like I said, it's not the Fresno that, that these folks tell me that they grew up in. So I just want to thank you for, for your comments. I wanted to share my comments and thoughts, you know. And, and we'll move forward from here. Hope you, you understand why we're doing what we're doing. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone in opposition? All right, that carries unanimously.
We now move to item number six under Public Works and Planning. Consider Appeal of Planning Commission's Approval Variance Number 4165, proposing to allow a zero-foot front yard setback for an attached deck and an eight-foot front yard setback to recognize an existing residential addition where a minimum of 20-foot front yard setback is required.
You guys should be recalled.
Bob.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Brandl with the Public Works and Planning Department. This item comes to your board on appeal of the Planning Commission's made 16th decision on a vote of five to two with two commissioners' absence. The, the variances for a project site that is 6,435 square foot parcel in the R1M zone, it's located on the north side, excuse me, the north side of Dalton Avenue, approximately 55 feet west of the intersection with Lakeview Avenue in the unincorporated community of Shaver Lake. The variance proposes to allow a zero-foot front yard setback for an attached deck and an eight-foot front yard setback to recognize an existing residential addition where a minimum 20-foot setback requirement is in place. It also is to allow a 38-foot tall building height for a residential addition where a 35-foot height limitation exists. If a board chooses to uphold the commission's approval, the variance, it would be appropriate to make a motion to determine that the required findings can be made as discussed in the staff report to the planning commission. Approve the variance 4165, subject to the conditions of approval and project notes as listed in Attachment A, Exhibit B, and with the addition condition for an indemnification agreement as recommended by staff, and to direct staff to file a notice of exemption prepared for the project with county clerk and state clearinghouse. If a board is not able to make the required findings, it would be appropriate to make a motion to approve the appeal and to deny the variance stating the reasons for the findings that cannot be made. Before you is the site plan for the project. If you'd like, we could do a short PowerPoint presentation. And that, that concludes my brief presentation.
All right. Any questions for staff on this particular item? This is in my district, but what I'd like to do is hear from members of the public on this. And I know that the appellant is here, and what I want to do is give the appellant an opportunity to, to speak first. And Russell, you'll have, you'll have, or any of your, anyone who's going to be representing you, I'm sure that you'll speak on your own behalf. You'll have up to six minutes just to share with us about this particular project. You don't have to use all that time, but please feel free to come forward and share what some of your concerns are, and, and then we're going to hear from members of the public as well.
Mr. Chair, if I could clarify, the site plan staff's placed up on the screen. It's been revised to show increased side yard setbacks. It does not affect the front yard. But when the designer originally used an assessor's parcel map, that was a 65-foot lot width, and actually using a subdivision map is 75 feet. So this is reflected as a corrected site plan. No change to the variance request, only the side yards increased. So I wanted to get that into the record today.
Appreciate that. Thank you. So, Mr. Eifert.
Good morning, Chairman Baxig and board members. First, I'd like to thank all of you for your service to Fresno County. My name is Russell Eifert. My residence in Fresno County is 14580 South Cedar. And my home at Shaver is 44439 Dalton, which is across the street from this variance application. I'm here to request that the board, the county board, deny this variance 4165. It's the county's responsibility to do in-office and onsite inspections to verify that the site plans are accurate and that building plans are adhered to. The county provides a check and balance on building sites, which provides the public with the confidence that any building is being constructed per county codes and regulations. Variance and encroachment permits should be requested prior to any approved site plans. Since site, since a site survey is not required in the county on building or remodel projects, there was, and there was no survey submitted on this project. The result was the contractor provided incorrect measurements on the site plan, which were submitted to the county plan check department. We would not be here today if a survey was required. But as Mr. Mata relayed to us multiple times, and also in his May 9, 2024 email, and I quote, " Submitting accurate plans is the responsibility of the designer, draftperson, engineer. Staff will verify in-field for accuracy, but ultimately, the one creating the plans is responsible for the accuracy." Staff not verify onsite for this site plan's accuracies. Once again, but the one that is creating the plans has responsibility for their accuracies. Do we have the site plan that I provided that has multiple? Sal asked me, said he would be presented. It would look like this? Or we can slide it on here, either one? I mean, great to just lay it right here, because it's off the same one. Whichever way. What I'd like to bring out to you on this is the existing building, which was the 1968 plot, is in the green on this, on this map. The original site plan that was filed in June of 2022 showed the building being back. That's the red one with approximately 20 feet from the back property line instead of the actual 32, or approximately 32 feet that was there. I believe any contractor should be able to measure that quite easily and see that the, the building, that they were, the site plan they were proposing had the building in the wrong location. On that original site plan, it also showed a 30-foot right-of-way down on the road, down here, which this gentleman, the contractor out there, has lived up there five years, does a snow removal for Point 1, and should have known that the right-of-way has a, is a 40 feet instead of 30 feet. And this is per the 1946 Shaver Lake Point 1 and 2 subdivision maps. On this plan, on their original site plan, they were able to show that there is a 20-foot front setback. So therefore, the contractor owners knew that there was a required setback up at the point. The original site plan also shows an eight-foot deck. Per county email, the contractor owners built the deck at 15 feet 8 inches, not the 8 feet that was approved on the building plans. This is done without getting any county approval or asking for any changes. This was done without getting any county approval or asking for any changes. That's under resolution thirteen oh thirty-eight exhibit B. Mr. White has a summary there. Quote, it says, "Development shall be in accordance with the approved site plan, floor plans, and elevations." This one was not. The original site plan also shows a ten feet from the original building. That is the yellow line. That is the leach line on the from the original building of ten feet. The revised site plan, which is sent into the county on twelve thirty-one twenty-three, shows a leach line, which is the number seven, the blue, at approximately sixteen feet from the nineteen sixty-eight building. I'm not real sure how a leach line moves that was not removed and replaced. As just got stated earlier, and I presented this to the county, the original site plan showed a right-of way a property line of sixty-five point three six-three feet, but per that nineteen forty-six point two subdivision map, the property line was seventy-five feet, which does give them more side room. County was first notified of possible code violations and standard codes and regulation violations on eight seven two thousand twenty-three by James Effer. We are concerned with a dirt hill, which we'll get to in just a moment, and a road widening which could or might cause encroachment on our property line.
We're going to give you a little bit more time.
Okay, I appreciate that. There just happens to be a lot here that went on. At the time, there was no deck or driveway in the construction, which and had not been started by eight seven twenty-three. But the building construction has continued to this day and is basically complete. I also, okay, once again, I have three pictures that were sent in to Sal to get to this picture of the hill, the encroachment, the slope that's there. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Well, Russell, keep talking, and I think it'll pop up on the screen in a minute. So just keep talking.
Okay, well, okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I was just waiting for that so you could have a visual on what I'm trying to say. Prior to two thousand seventeen, there was the original site there. The driveway was fairly narrow. Now, in two thousand seventeen, there was a new driveway installed, and it was pushed out, and that dirt was pushed out onto the hill that we have concern with. And then again, here in two thousand twenty-three, that driveway was completely removed and reinstalled. It was increased by another three to four feet, and all that dirt was pushed off. So what's happened is the slope on the roadside, the paved roadside, there we go. The top one is the first one. Two thousand seventeen is the bottom right and lower left. You can see now what the the slope that we're concerned about going into the right-of-way of the road. What happens here is we only have eighteen feet of of pavement that butts up against my brother Jim's home, and that's our parking area. We don't park on the right-of-way like a lot of people do, but that's that's it there.
And Russell, I'm going to have you wrap up, but you'll have an opportunity to come up and rebut after comments.
Okay, that's fine. But once again, I just don't know how a contractor with experience that can build a home as nice and beautiful as this one is with as many multiple connections, I don't understand how a contractor can miss and file a inaccurate site plan. Once again, the construction continued, and once again, what we are looking for and started originally from the county is on this slope that you see on the left side, if it if there has if there is any widening of Dalton Avenue up in that area, we would like to have some sort of guarantee that our property line would not be affected. The reason I ask that, our parking area, where our property is from the property line, is flat. It is used now if we're not there. People drive on it as if it is the road because the eighteen-foot pavement is on the south side of the road of that forty-foot right-of-way.
Thank you.
I will stop right now then. Thank you very much. I can answer any of your questions if you'd like.
Well, we may have some questions for you at the end, but I think we want to hear from others, too.
Thank you.
So with that, I'm going to ask now for the applicant to have his representative, his or her representative come forward at this time, and then we'll hear from additional members from the public.
Hey, good morning, board. There you go. That's just to give you a visual of the property we're talking about is up on the left, and that's that that's the rise up to the property and the existing roads, and Effer's house is over to the left. But my name is Kyle Illers, and I'm a licensed contractor, have been for twenty-three years. I've worked for both national and regional construction companies. The bulk of my experience has been in the construction of custom homes and remodeling with a considerable amount of home remodeling up here in this Shaver area and their community. In all the time that I've done construction, I've never been in even with the ocean inspections, private parties doing prevailing wage jobs, I've never been red-tagged or cited for any construction or site violations. This particular project with Chad and Cindy's desire to expand their family cabin with their growing needs, much like many of the other homeowners up in this neighborhood, with one major concern for Chad and Cindy was to address the uphill erosion and the flooding of the garage, some of the concerns that Effer has brought up in prior arguments. So I contacted the county building department of Fresno to gather the information that I We'll leave it sideways like that. This is part of the information I originally received. As far as that, this was our adjustments to that site plan that was provided to help us create the initial design build for this particular project. And you'll see that that where the house is, where the new addition originally, the eight-foot build-on on the front, the eight-foot deck, was in there along with the property line that we had designed, which falls in line with what? Which is what really ended up down at the county as a final presentation for our build. So this project, so I utilized this site plan to build that information. In late July of two thousand twenty-two, I obtained an approved set of plans to commence demolition and construction on this particular project. Construction started mid-August two thousand twenty-two. This project, like so many other remodels that I've done over the years, had its fair fair share of changes. Like most remodels, the initial vision on paper is not always as clear as seeing the building take place. At one year, at September two thousand twenty-three, and about sixty percent of the construction completed with all the required inspections at this point, I was notified by the county department that the approved set of plans that I was working on had an oversight and the location of the structure. The structure was in the setback of the property, and the small portion of the deck was encroaching in the right-of-way. I met with the county to discuss options, corrections, resolutions from this point forward. At that time, the discussion directed me to apply for a variance. On May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the county variance was approved with at least thirteen letters from homeowners in the area supporting the variance of the application. In addition to the construction, we went to extensive measures to address the potential of drainage erosion. The water dripping from the roof now and the deck are now channeled into pipelines, which empty at the bottom of the hill. And therefore, you can go back to the original. So that water now, I don't have a pointer up here, but basically, any of the water that comes up there is in a pipe at the bottom of that where the grass and the driveway comes together, empties there onto the Dalton roadway at this time. So there's a pipe that has been located about right there that brings a large percentage of any of the water that's on this property and roof down to this area and below the runoff area. The deck, yeah, basically, and the deck was also designed as a collection device. All of the water coming down on that deck was designed for personal use, but it does collect water with gutter systems that is all piped into that system as well, basically stopping a high percentage of the water that would normally end up on that driveway and running down that seventy-two percent embankment. The right-of-way that he's talking about, the driveway there, we replaced the existing crumbling, cracking concrete and the approach because we damaged it during construction with heavy equipment. We added a curb that you can see there on the south end of the driveway to help with channeling the water off of that slope because it is actually angled towards that seventy-two-degree embankment, and it helped with winter driving safety. The homeowners have had some issue where that road is slick, and their car has slid towards a seventy-two-degree embankment.
I'm going to give you about sixty more seconds. If you can wrap up, that'd be great.
Oh, this was all driveway work, flat work existing. We replaced it with no changes to the driveway location or grade. The applicant on record has a reason for his appeal. He also was a homeowner that has remodeled and expanded his cabin several years ago. In doing so, beyond the side, in doing so, he built beyond the side setback, beyond the property line, and into the adjacent property. This is still an unresolved issue between the two property owners. Still don't understand how that could happen, but I do have a letter from the homeowner, and I have copies of the board would like to have those. And I would like to read this, the letter from the the homeowner.
You might not have enough time. You've only got seconds.
I am writing, okay, I'm writing a letter to support the Metoyan family, a contractor involved in the variance approval process. The applicant, Russell Effer, is posing an argument of the approved variance and the current appeal against Chad and Cindy. I do not agree with this complaint.
And that letter that you've just given the clerk will have, so we can we can read that as well. Or if you have someone else that is would like to read that letter, because I know that you've got a number of people here from your team, someone else can read that letter. But I need to open it up to the public now and give an opportunity for members of the public to speak to this item. But anyone can choose to read that letter if they would like to, and I will as well. It's up here in front of us.
Appreciate your time.
I will finish reading this letter, but my name is Cindy Metoyan. I'm Chad's wife. So again, this letter is from Mr. Effer's neighbor directly next door to Mr. Effer. And just to clarify, Mr. Effer is not our neighbor directly across the street. He is across Catty Corner from us, so not directly across the street from us. From the neighbor Steve Black, to Fresno County Board of Supervisors, I am writing this letter in support of the Metoyan family and the contractor involved in the variance approval process. The appellant, Russell Effer, is posing the argument of the approved variance and the current appeal against Chad and Cindy Metoyan. I not only disagree with his complaint, but want to share that he has done construction without proper approval and variances himself. He doesn't apply the rules to himself. As an example, in approximately two thousand nine, the Effer family expanded and improved their property, encroaching on my property line without my permission. He and his family had all the same challenges to meet the county building and land use requirements. From my understanding, most of these challenges were taken care during the process of construction, except for the above-mentioned problem. His newly remodeled home has been built past their west property line, which still resides on my property today. He had offered to pay for a property line lot adjustment after the completion of his new construction. I denied this request, and the matter is still unresolved. Respectfully submitted, Steve Black. Okay, so, good morning. My name is Cindy Metoyan. I grew up in Fresno and have always enjoyed visiting Shaver and wanted to find a home for my family. My husband and I spent years looking, and we finally found the right cabin in the perfect location in two thousand thirteen, when our three sons were very young, six months, two and three years of age. Over the last eleven years, we've created incredible memories and hope that this most recent remodel would allow our immediate family to experience Shaver with us. There's been tension with Mr. Effer since the two thousand seventeen driveway issue, which my husband will address, but I felt that it was behind us in the spring of two thousand twenty-three. Chad, my husband, coached a baseball team with Mr. Effer's son, which also included Mr. Effer's grandson. At several tournaments from February through June, I was told by Mr. Effer how beautiful the remodel was coming and how happy he was for my family. You can imagine how shocked and disappointed I was when Kyle told us that yet again, Mr. Effer had gone to the county with another complaint. We're good people, and we're good neighbors. On the fifth of July of this year, we hosted an open house for all of our neighbors at the point. Everyone who attended loved the work that had been done.
We're going to give you another minute.
Okay. Loved the work that had been done. They had no problem with our deck, and that's actually where we all hung out, ate together, and no one had any issues whatsoever. We enjoy the strong sense of family and community presence in Shaver, and we got it that evening. We hired a great contractor in Kyle, who we stand behind one hundred percent. We know mistakes were made, and we want to do what's needed so we can put it behind us, but most importantly, for Mr. Effer to quit harassing us. We will do what it takes. Thank you.
My name is Chad Metoyan. I live with my wife at thirty-three forty-two East Via Montiano, Clovis, nine three six one nine. I want to start by acknowledging that mistakes were made by our contractor Kyle and some by the county as well. As soon as Kyle was made aware of the issues, he immediately worked with the county to take the steps necessary to remedy the situation. My specialty is fruits and vegetables, and I really don't know much about home building or remodeling, but my dad taught me to always buy the best and hire the best. With that in mind, my wife and I hired Kyle because he came highly recommended by Jimmy Anderson, Jim Ashton, Steve Salinas, and Bob Newton, neighbors who all used him for their remodels and builds, and neighbors who we trust and respect. Even though it has been very stressful since we learned of this variance issue in the fall, I would still recommend Kyle without hesitation to anybody who asked. He's a third contractor who has helped us with our cabin over the years and is by far the best due to his honesty, integrity, creativity, and ability. Again, I know that mistakes were made by our contractor Kyle. I'm not trying to diminish that. That said, to get a true picture of what is going on, I feel that it is important to share the history between us and Russell Effer. We both made offers on this cabin in the summer of two thousand thirteen, and fortunately, we got it. In two thousand seventeen, we replaced the old center block retaining wall with a beautiful rock wall made with gigantic boulders that were sliced in half on-site and then placed in the mountainside. Unfortunately, the heavy machinery and heavy boulders damaged the forty-year-old driveway beyond repair, so we took it out and poured into the exact footprint. Russell contacted the county and said that we poured onto county property. We had to rip out the bottom five feet of the driveway three times before I was able to get a resolution in our favor by using aerial photos from two thousand thirteen and present day, two thousand seventeen, showing that we simply removed and poured at the exact same footprint toward the end of our property. But we're not the only neighbors who Russell has targeted. Bob Newton, who is my direct neighbor to the west, Paul Viall and Michael Roswell, who both live at the base of Dalton and Lakeview, have all been reported to the county by Russell. At the May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four hearing that ended in our favor with a five-two vote, Russell said that he was uncomfortable having to be in this position. Considering that this is the second time he's called the county on us since two thousand seventeen, they did the same thing to our neighbors I listed above. I would say not only is he very comfortable calling the county This remodel is going on 25 months and should have been done by December. We had a major roadblock in the fall and hope we're able to get it resolved in the very near future so we can finish the project. Thank you for your consideration.
Do you have any questions for me at all?
My name is Ron Wathan. I live at 6414 North Forkner in Fresno County, and we have a cabin at 44356 Hillcrest Avenue. Just 10 cabins are so away from the Matoians. I am here today. I was asked to speak in favor of supporting and repolishing the variance. My real life, I'm a civil engineer, worked for Quadnoff, now QK, and I'm the president of that company. We, some of my earliest memories are at Shaver Lake, so it's been a fond area. I've grown up, you know, summers, winters, and everything up there, and have been in around the point for a long, long time, much like the Eifert's family. And I think this variance has certain complexities that I think has already been discussed, but the steep slopes, I think the, the road right of way is 40 feet. That doesn't sound very, you know, interesting, but most of it is on Chad Matoian's property, the Matoian's property. You know, the, from, you know, engineering or general contracting perspective, they came in and worked with the county at the best of their ability. Mistakes were made, obviously, on the site plan. Had they known about it, they would have probably been able to deal with it with a variance and gone through that. They just were not aware, so, you know, part of it is just the approach and the process is my point, trying to do the right thing, comply with county rules, things like that. You know, from a engineering perspective, you know, there's a couple, couple comments. One is, you know, the slope stability has been brought up as an issue. Mostly, it's DG and granite rock up there. You know, generally speaking, it's very stable slopes. They've also been able to plant the slopes, so it's, you know, last winter, it was pretty bare, and now it's, the planting has been done, and that helps reinforce the slope and erosion, things, things like that. From the traffic perspective, I don't see the county ever going up there and widening the roadway. At Dalton, they would have to widen the entire point, and it's just not in your budget. But if they did, you know, the, the Ash Toe roadway design manual, you know, the, the deck is 15 to 17 feet off of the edge of pavement, so it's, you wouldn't really know unless you knew where the imaginary right-of-way line was. And because of that, I think that it appears similar to the rest of the neighborhood. In fact, it, this build enhances the neighborhood and the roadway of Dalton considerably. With that, again, my name is Ron Wathan. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and thank you very much for your time.
My name's Catherine Schneider. I reside at 3832 San Augustine Drive in Glendale, California, a short three-and-a-half-hour drive from here. Our cabin is at 44498 Lakeview Avenue. I'm here to respectfully request you support the appeal of the planning commission's approval of the variance application 4165. I'm a retired commercial interior designer. I spent 27 years as a sole proprietor doing tenant improvement work, office, retail banking, and then some commercial retail work. Prior to that, I had about 10 years in downtown Los Angeles designing high-end attorney offices. My family has been in the commercial construction business for over 100 years. My husband and I built our home on San Augustine back in 2008. I am not a residential, residentially-versed person when it comes to construction or design. We, as homeowners, started doing our due diligence, and I think that due diligence is important for a homeowner to take responsibility of that process. We started our due diligence. We hired a reputable architect. We received a demo permit. We went through design review, which is very arduous in Glendale. It came to our attention that a neighbor's fence was on our property. We had to go to small, we had to go to small claims to have them remove that fence. It came to our attention, not our architects, that we had an easement going through our property for water, power, gas, and cable, and it did not run a line along our property line. It took me over a year to have that moved. Boundaries, that's what's set out to protect us. They impact us personally and publicly.
You can have about another minute. Thank you.
We're responsible for preventing these violations of our boundaries. They help our relationships flourish, whether those violations of the boundaries are deliberate or of ignorance. And just one of those violations can cause an unfortunate precedent. Please consider your impact. You have a position of authority, of power, of trust. Please deny this variance. Thank you.
All right. I am now going to allow, I'm going to close the public portion, but allow Russell an opportunity to offer a rebuttal, since he is the appellant. He has that right, so Russell, if you can offer up, if you choose, two-minute rebuttal.
Thank you again. All I'd like to say is, the things that happened here, site plans that were inaccurate, a building, all of us at the point, all of us building a home, would do like to make it as large as we possibly could. You do stay within the rules and regulations. All my plans were surveyed, just to refute what was stated. We're all, ran, you know, same thing, went through the county, had it, talked about the problems that are there, and we all realized that there are problems with building in the mountains, especially on a cabin that was built back in 1958. That's when my original cabin was built. I do want to say that the one thing that is really, stands out to me is that there was an eight-foot deck on this home in the building plans that were approved by the county. It is now close to 16 feet wide, and all of it is in the setback of that 20 feet. And once again, most of the homes at Shaver do have that front setback. I had a picture of one home that has no deck in the front, talked to the construction person, the person that built it or designed it, I should say, and it was a 20-foot setback is the reason they don't have a deck, and this home does face the lake. So these are the things that we have to deal with, that's the, and unfortunately, we are here now. I don't have any malice or ill feeling. I just want to be able to have the point and the rules, codes, regulations that are there adhere to as best as possible, and the process that we're going through is the reason where problems arise. This is why we have this to take care of. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, we're going to close, close that conversation off. Now it's, there's an opportunity for us to ask additional questions of staff and, and make motions. So do any board members have questions?
Mr. Chairman, I also think now's the time, if we've had any extra communication with the applicants or things, it's time to disclose that. I would like to disclose that I believe we all received the packet that Mr. Eifert had possessed or given to the clerk, so I believe we're all good on that. In addition, in social settings, I have also had conversations regarding this project with Mr. Eifert.
All right, so anything that you need to disclose?
Yes, I, I met with one of the property owners.
Okay, very good. I've met with both Chad, I've met with Mr. Wathan, I've met with Russell, and spoken to him on the phone on a couple of different occasions, and so, yeah.
My chief of staff met with Russell. Of course, he, Russell lives down the street from her on Cedar Avenue, but I think I talked to Russell, might have been over a year ago. It's been a long time. I've known Russell for probably 40 years, so that's, that's all I have to disclose.
I don't think Supervisor Brandow had an opportunity to speak with anyone, so we now have disclosed that. Supervisor Pacheco, you have anything else that you would like to, any questions you have?
Well, again, it's, it's my understanding, it's unfortunate when we have these kind of issues among neighbors, but it happens. It's my understanding, I'd like staff to clarify, that when they submitted their plans, that the document of submittal was inaccurate, or that when the building started, that was accurate, and our inspector did not catch that. So I'd like for our staff to fully disclose and vet, how did we get to where we are today?
The document as submitted by the, the applicant was incorrect. The actual original site plan from '68 was incorrect. The building was closer than, than what the site plan depicted, and that may have been built upon. I can't speak to if that was the case, but certainly the, the designer provided a copy of that.
So the original site plan that was submitted by the applicant, the people making the deck, was, was wrong?
Was incorrect.
Incorrect?
Incorrect. Once we were notified by members of the public that there was a potential issue, we sent inspectors out there to look. Inspection staff footing, actually, construction had already started. That can, there were enough of concern that we asked a county survey crew to go out there and confirm the location, which is where we then realized that a portion of the, one of the columns within a portion of the deck was approaching into the right of way. Certainly made contact with the property owner and the designer at that point. When staff went out again to look at construction, they also realized that the deck and other improvements were different than the plans we had approved. There was a, a larger deck area and some other things that were different than what we seen.
So there is, there is, okay, so let's, let's chronologically, let's go through this for us, okay? So we submitted a plan. Unfortunately, that plan was inaccurate. Mistakes happened, though, so we can accept that. How were we, we aware that the plan was inaccurate, or when did we come to know that?
We came to know that when we were contacted by members of the public that they thought it was too close to the right of way, too close to the road.
And then, so to rectify that, we sent our own surveying crew up there to mark where the actual boundaries are at that the county adheres to.
That's correct.
And at what stage of construction did that occur when we sent the survey crew out there?
The construction was already framed. There were already columns constructed. They, they hadn't weatherized it yet, but it was, it was pretty far along in the process.
And at that point is when you discovered that the actual construction was different than the plan submitted?
That's correct.
Because we've heard an eight-foot, now it's 16 feet, so it was modified from the plans that were submitted to the county?
That's correct. And that occurred, those site inspections occurred in August and then in September as well. The survey crew actually were able to get out there in Sept, early September.
Okay, so when we went out there and we discovered this, what did we do with the property owner? How did we approach that?
Oh, we discussed the issue, said it would need to be modified, that we, the only way to do that, either, you know, it, it's so far into the, into the setback, and the existing house is right, the existing cabin was right up to that setback, that they would need a variance anyway. So we, we discussed the process to apply for a variance if they wanted to seek relief. We did let them get to the point where they could weatherize the improvement so that they wouldn't be damaged during the winter, which is always an issue up there.
Seems reasonable, yeah.
And, and then told them that we would not grant them occupancy, and that they needed to go through the variance process to get that rectified. And that variance, the, the applicant submitted plans as constructed as what, what's out there for the variance, and I want to say January of this past year, and then we took it a hearing in May, and ultimately, the commission voted, not unanimously, but they did vote to approve the variance.
Okay. And now that's where we are here today, so.
Correct.
The planning commission, on a split vote, granted it, and then the member of the public, which we now know is Mr. Eifert, is appealing that variance to the board here, who has the final authority on this matter.
Yes, and to clarify, it was not a split vote. I believe it was two, two against, but the, two and off against it, but the majority.
Was not unanimous vote, yeah.
Not unanimous.
On a majority vote, you can say, on a majority vote approved it, and now they appealed that, and here we are today.
And just also to clarify that for the board, we did send an inspector out with about three weeks ago, just to re-measure everything out there to confirm, is it matched with the site plan is? And we did confirm that what was constructed does match the site plan.
Okay.
Okay, so let me just get a clear, you asked some great questions.
Yeah, we want to see how we got here. So, so we, we have some responsibility in this, so they originally have responsibility that they submitted the wrong plans. However, with our area of expertise, our inspectors, upon first inspection, we should have caught that. We should have caught that.
Yes, we.
Stopped it as soon as we did it, without a member of the public coming to us. We should have been able to do that with the level and education of people that we have here. We should have picked that up.
We, it certainly should have raised a flag, and we've discussed that with, with our inspection staff. We've had additional training. Well, can you, I think everybody in the division is completely aware of this issue, and, and has brought it again to everybody's memory that, hey, this is an issue out there. If we need to require surveys, we may need to acquire that for front yard improvements. So we do have a plan going forward.
Which, again, which we've learned today, surveying in the mountains is a lot more tedious and a lot more detailed than what it is, that what we're used to in the rural part of the county.
That is correct.
Right, because everything's flat.
Okay. Go ahead, Supervisor.
Yeah, no, because you, you were asking the exact question, so basically, the cure for this was giving them a variance.
That is correct.
Yeah, with the planning commission by a split vote.
It was actually a majority of the commission. There were two that voted.
Two were absent.
Or two voted against it.
Two voted against it.
Was it a five to two?
Right.
Five to two.
So like Supervisor Pacheco said, it's now come to the ultimate authority, which is us.
That is correct. On appeal, it's before the board.
So how, how often?
Turn your mic on, please.
How often do we allow variances for this type of situation? Is that very common, or?
In Shaver, in the point, it's not uncommon. Front yard setbacks are less common, but I went through the staff report that listed a number of variances. There's one in there, I think, from the late 90s, which was constructed at a, it was already built, and they thought it was at a five-foot side yard, and it actually was at zero, so they had to go through a variance process. I, I do recollect being present for one, which was, there was an issue with a PLA, and they built a deck on someone else's property. So in that area, there are issues, and we do see variances.
Are there ever any projects that have gone off the plan so bad that we just say, got to tear that down?
In my recollection, well.
I don't know about Shaver, but I can tell you, when Supervisor Mendez and I were here in our first two years, we had an issue in your district with then Supervisor Borges that a garage was built over the line, and they tore the garage down. here in our first two years, we had an issue in your district with then Supervisor Borges, that a garage was built over the line, and they tore the garage down. And that was not a pleasant experience either. But again, I believe they didn't file plans for that one. Don't fully remember the details, it was eight years ago, but this board did make them tear the garage down.
Hmm. So, it does happen.
Yeah, in your district, yeah.
Okay.
There was a wall that was constructed, a front yard wall that was constructed on the point. This occurred probably around two thousand eight or so, which ultimately the board did not approve. It was already constructed. They came to the planning commission, and then ultimately to the board on appeal, and they had to tear that down.
And, so, you know, I've been following along. So, are we talking about a, a deck that was originally supposed to be eight feet, and now sixteen feet, and that is built over the line? Is that correct?
That's correct. It is a deck that is, is about two-point-six feet into the right-of-way.
Right. Just very interesting.
Just, I just want to make a clarification. But, if the planning commission would have denied it, then it would have never got here, and they would have had to do something.
If they would have denied the variance?
Yeah, correct?
Could have, could have appealed it.
And they would have had to appeal it to us.
That's correct.
Right, right. So, it, you know, like, an eight-foot, all of a sudden becoming a sixteen-foot, a little bit of a problem there. You know, it's not like, oh, crap, this thing was supposed to be eight feet, we built it ten feet. That's, you know, that's kind of like, okay, shoot, I could have made that mistake. If you do eight-foot to sixteen-foot, that's a pretty strong intent right there. I mean, that's, but now, of the sixteen feet, only two and a half feet are over the line. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. Co-entire survey, only two, two-point-six feet.
Two-point-six feet.
Or into the right-of-way.
Great line of questioning Supervisor Pacheco.
Couple of comments I'd like to throw out, because I think we're still missing a few things. The, I think the contractor used the site plan that was approved by the county in nineteen sixty-eight, correct?
That's correct.
The site plan that was approved by the county in nineteen sixty-eight was wrong, correct?
Yes, it was incorrect.
So, and also too, there was, the house that was built in sixty-eight was added on to in the nineteen eighties, correct?
I'm not aware of that. I knew there was a deck.
There was an issue of height, and that's part of this variance, correct? That was done, my understanding, in the nineteen eighties, not even by Mr. Matoian. So, what I want to just kind of lay out here, I represent the point. Beautiful area, amazing people that live there. And looking at the subdivision that was approved in the forties, the right-of-way that was approved, and what actually is built out there, doesn't match. There's a lot that doesn't match out there. And the county has allowed a lot of things over the years. And where I'm a little hesitant to, to use a hammer on one individual, I recognize that if we wanted to go up there and do a full-blown record of survey of that subdivision, and how it's been built out, I think we would find a ton of violations. And if, so, we have to operate, in my opinion, like Solomon, and we got to cut the baby on this thing. There are certain things that we can allow and other things that we cannot.
Split the baby.
Split the baby. So, one thing that you did say, I want to make sure it's clear. The, ended, the contractor submitted a new set of plans, and you said that an inspection took place, and the new set of plans that were submitted have been adhered to. Is that correct? The larger deck, which wasn't on the original site plan in twenty-twenty-two, a new site plan was submitted that was verified by staff. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. The issue I have, I don't know how staff could ever allow anything to be built into right-of-way. That's got to be rectified, and I believe the planning commission identified that too, saying that that two and a half feet, that cannot be in county right-of-way. That's, that's public property and not private property. And that still is the position of, of staff, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, very good. I think a lot of this could have been prevented. If the site plan in nineteen sixty-eight, if someone would have gone out there and actually identified the four corners, or actually, I think it's four corners, of that particular property, and that original house was positioned where it was supposed to be in accordance with the subdivision map. But that wasn't done. And so, out of that, we have a number of things that were done on that property, and here we are today, trying to fix everything kind of all at once, using a variance, not only for setback issues, but for height issues as well. Because of all this, and we've spent a lot of time discussing it, and I know that, I appreciate, Russell is not wrong. He is right in what he's identified here. But the Matoians are not wrong either, and the contractor is not wrong, even though I put a little bit more of the burden of blame on the contractor, because at the end of the day, as the contractor, you always need to be identifying property corners and make, you know, making sure that you're within, you know, within the, the boundary and meeting setback requirements. But for me, I believe what the planning commission recommended is, is appropriate. But part of that deck needs to be cut off. You can't have two and a half feet in the right-of-way. So, I will make a motion to support what the planning commission approved. And with that, I believe there are some additional requirements that staff has made. Can you state what those are?
Yes. So, we added, or requested that the board consider four additional conditions. I'll just summarize the conditions. There, start on page three, the agenda item. First is getting a, a new encroachment permit within thirty days for the driveway. Second is that the existing, exposing and confirming the location of the existing septic leach line, and anything that needs to be done to address that, should it be overcovered with concrete or other, other things that, that could affect its performance that needs to be addressed. Third is, within sixty days, the effective date of approval of the variance, that certified geotecton report is prepared and provided to the county to confirm that there's no issues with the, the slope that might affect the road. And finally, that the owner's interim indemnification agreement associated with the board's action, should they approve it?
So, I will include those in my motion as well, and I'm going to read into the record, because I know that county council likes things to be very precise. So, I'm going to determine that the required findings as specified in the Fresno County zoning ordinance, Article Five, Chapter five sixty-point-five can be made, as recommended in the planning commission staff report. I'm also going to approve variance number four-one, or make a recommendation that variance number four-one-six-five, subject to the conditions of approval and project notes, as listed in Attachment A, Exhibit B, and the additional conditions as recommended by staff. And I'm going to direct staff to file a notice of exemption prepared for the project with the county clerk and state clearinghouse. So, that is my motion.
So, your motion allows for the variance?
It allows for the variance.
But you're still saying that we, the part that encroaches.
That's got to be, that's got to come out. That's got to be demoed.
Is that possible on this deal? Have you?
Oh, it's possible. It's going to be expensive, though. But I, I can't approve something in the public right-of-way. And, and that was also made clear at the planning commission as well, that that two and a half feet has to come out. The challenge is, there is a pillar that is in the right-of-way. That pillar has to literally be moved, and the deck has to be cut. But that has to be done, in my opinion. So, that's part of my motion.
Okay.
There's a second to that motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
No, I think that seems to be a reasonable solution. I think there were errors on, on both sides. As long as we get out of the county right-of-way, I think that's the, the remedy for this, and both sides had to give a little, little bit. So, I would, I would accept that, because the only point that I would make Supervisor is, granted, if it was made in nineteen fifty-eight, forty-eight, or twenty-eight, we're currently doing a road on Jensen, and the markers are wrong. And there are farmers that are removing trees and vines because it's in the county right-of-way, and they are not happy about that. On one hand, I tell them you have the benefit of farming on the county right-of-way free of charge. And on the other hand, it's unfortunate, but once we do discover it now, we can't keep it going wrong, and we have to correct that. So, I can accept your, your motion and full, or fully support. We know it's on the county right-of-way, and that has to be remedied. And I believe your motion is the best solution for this unfortunate situation. So, I will be supporting your motion.
You know, one thing, you know, you mentioned that, but on the north-south roads, especially if you get below Alcorn Avenue, a lot of the roads aren't, aren't in the true county right-of-way. They kind of wander. So, there's a lot of that out there, where people are actually on the county, farming on the county right-of-way, and have actually put improvements on the county right-of-way.
They meander.
They snake their way through.
With that, there's a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. All right.
We now move to item number seven. Under Public Works and Planning, Consider Appeal of the Planning Commission's File of Areas, Application Number Four-One-Six-Four.
Afternoon. David Randall again with TART, Department of Public Works and Planning. This item, variance forty-one-sixty-four, comes to you from the, from the Planning Commission's May sixteenth meeting, where there was a unanimous decision for a denial, eight-oh, with one commissioner absence. The site of the application is located on the southeast corner of Maple Avenue and Clayton Avenue, approximately two miles from the city limits of the city of Fresno. The proposed variance would, had it been approved, allowed the creation of a one-point-four acre parcel, an eighteen-point-six acre parcel from an existing twenty-acre parcel in the AE zone district. If your board is not able to make the required finding for the variance, it would be appropriate to uphold the planning commission's decision, make a motion to deny the variance forty-one-sixty-four, determining that the refined, the required findings cannot be made as discussed in the planning commission's staff report. If your board is able to make the required findings, it would be appropriate to approve the, the appeal by a motion to approve the variance, subject to the conditions of approval stating the reasons for the finding, that the reasons the findings can be made. This ends my short presentation. Be glad to answer any questions you have.
Questions for staff? All right, I'm going to open up the public portion. This is a public hearing. If the appellant would like to come forward and, Chair, now is your time.
Good afternoon, Chairman Magzig and Supervisors. My name is Dale Mel. Office address is two zero nine zero North Winery Avenue in Fresno. I'm here on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Napoli, owners of the property, and applicants for the proposed land division. I would like to address the question on findings for, or failure to find the findings on one, two, and four of the required findings. Special circumstances involved with the property, physical property itself, obviously, there's none, so there's really no standing for, I'm trying to identify any special circumstances there. Finding number two, variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of the substantial property right of the applicant that would be enjoyed by adjoining property owners. If we take a look at a large area map that we provided for our second page on our parcel map or variance application, you'll see that there are in excess of ninety-six substandard parcels within a mile radius of this site. So, we have ninety-six less-than-twenty-acre parcels within a mile. If you expand it out to the full visual of that, you would be in excess of a hundred parcels under the twenty-acre minimum size. Mr. Napoli, Vince Napoli, was born on the northwest, the farm on the northwest corner of Maple. And that, that was original family farm in nineteen sixty-two. Vince has farmed the property since nineteen sixty-two. Well, let's give him a couple of years of being an adolescent. Let's throw maybe nineteen seventy before he actually started doing chores. But his parents didn't share title with him at that time. They, as most Italian families do, keep title in their name until they distribute title on their estate. That leads us to an issue with Vince trying to acquire a life estate, as would be permitted, and county would approve that on these applications if that term of occupation, not occupation, but ownership, extended back into the sixties, pre-seventies. So, we have a circumstance here that where, during that time, sixty-two years, eighty-two.
You've got about sixty more seconds or so. Please wrap up.
So, we have history with the property that, that is enjoyed by others in the immediate area. Finding number four, if you look at the findings addressed that said inconsistent, all deal with residential use of that adjoining parcel. That we can make the findings, that this is an existing residence, not a proposed residence, and that we have a letter from the proposed buyer, or the buyer in escrow currently, an adjoining property owner, Mr. Yurgat, with RJ Farms, has agreed to put a covenant on the property, a no-bill covenant on the eighteen acres, because he's interested in farming. He does farm other areas or other parcels in the immediate area. So, he's not interested in expanding on a residential limitation for the, the site. So, we have an ability to look at findings two and findings four, to be able to say, we can address those and meet the requirements that we're obligated to.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wishing to comment on this item?
I'm going to get a question on my side. My husband has given his life to make food for this county. He has labored like I, I've never seen. I'm a city girl. I came out there when we married in nineteen eighty-eight. I'm Lynn, Lynn Napoli. He has given his life to provide sun-made raisins. We're sun-made growers. I also have worked on the farm. I've also done a lot of the labor. We are in a forced retirement. This was not our choice. He had the widowmaker, so I almost lost him because of the farming. The doctor told him he had to stop. So, we are now in our sixties, rearranging our entire life. Luckily, I have my own business, which is successful. I'm a fine artist. I do portrait work. In the barn, I have a studio where I do portrait for clients. But he is now struggling to find his, where he needs to be, because he's a grower. That's what he is in his soul. And we just want to retire and own our own home, and let Yurgat, which we are also, we are also renting twenty, let's see, excuse me, thirty acres on the other parcel to him. And I want to keep it ag, just like you do, because that's who we are. So, I, I'm begging you to let us do this, so that my husband can have a nice retirement. And I trust John Yurgat with, with everything. He's great to work with, and he will take care of that other eighteen acres. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, I'm going to close the public portion and bring it back to the board. Brian, this is in your district.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, the speaker was accurate. Because it is an AE twenty, it's under the minimum, and the rules do not allow for that. However, there are exceptions to the rules. If it's from a parent to a child, the parent could have done this, and it would never have come to the board. It could have been done administratively, and I believe that is with, in the rules, and it could have been a done issue. Is that correct, staff?
That is correct. If, if it was conveyed in a different manner.
In a different manner. So, because of that, Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion. I want to grant their variance and allow them to maintain in their home.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second, also noting that the findings can be made, and we will accept the finding as stated by the representative of the family that shared how the findings can be met. So, there's a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously.
We now move to item number eight. Under Public Works and Planning, Consider and Adopt Mitigating Negative Declaration, Including mitigation monitoring Consider and adopt mitigated negative declaration, including mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program based on initial study application, seven nine one eight. Mr. Chairman, we did receive something for item eight about an hour ago, so I will distribute now.
And also too, I want to note, there was an email that was sent to my office that we gave to the clerk that also is in all board members' packets. So staff, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, David Randall again. This item comes to your board on unanimous recommendation of the Planning Commission from its May sixteenth meeting. Project involves three different entitlements. It is, the overall purpose is to provide for the development of a two hundred unit multifamily residential complex, which will, which includes, for your consideration, adoption of a mitigated negative declaration, approval of a general plan amendment, which would amend the Millerton specific plan, approval of an amendment application that would realign some of the existing zoning boundaries, and a conditional use permit which would approve a planned unit development for the two hundred unit multifamily residential complex. The site is, is a twenty-three acre parcel located on the east side of Marina Drive, approximately a hundred and fifty feet south of Millerton Road, three miles east of the unincorporated community of Fryant. If your board chooses to concur with the Commission's recommendation, would it be appropriate to move the staff's recommended action? If not, you would, if the board is not able to make the recommended findings, it would be appropriate to make a motion to deny, stating the reasons why the board cannot make the findings. I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
I've got a couple of quick questions. So again, looking at this proposal, which is before us, in two thousand and four, this parcel was approved for something else, and there was a traffic study that was done at that time, which I think eighteen hundred trips a day would be generated by the old use that was approved in two thousand and four. Is that correct?
That is correct.
This particular use, there was some type of analysis that was done, and it was identified that a lot fewer trips would be generated from this particular site.
That is correct.
You indicated that a mitigated negative declaration could be offered up because the use here is less intense than what the use that was already approved and the entitlements granted in two thousand and four. Is that correct?
Correct. Initial study identified the impacts being less significant.
All right, with that on the record, I'm going to open, well, actually, any board members have any comments? I'm going to open it up to the public now for, we'll start with members in favor of the project. If the applicant is here in support of the project, you can speak first, and then we'll have an opportunity to hear from others as well.
I was prepared to say good morning, but I'll say good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. My name is Austin Yule. My address is seven three five West Aluvio, Suite one oh three, Fresno, California, nine three seven eleven. I'm here on behalf of my father, the applicant from the Clark's Field Company. As you know, this project has taken significant time. He, in that time, has had multiple other sons, so I'm also joined by two of my brothers. I'm also joined by Ginder Development, who is also the project applicant and developer for the multifamily project. We want to thank staff. We want to thank the Planning Commission for the unanimous support of the project. We had held two separate neighborhood meetings, as well as outreach letters. We had received, at the Planning Commission, neighborhood support, and unfortunately, given the time, they had to leave, but we're here to continue their support of the project. As noted, the project was originally approved as a hotel and conference center. With the construction and building of the neighboring hotel and convention and conference center by Table Mountain Rancheria, and giving the housing needs in the area, we put forward a multifamily project, which includes senior housing, as well as upscale multifamily housing, including amenities in the surrounding areas. There are numerous mitigation measures and conditions of approval. We had just received the letter, the only correspondence we had seen questioning the project to date. And I'm happy to address any of those questions. We're joined in the audience by the VRPA, who had done the traffic analysis, as well as the air study, as well as Allied Engineers, the consultant who worked on the water and wastewater system. So they're available to answer any other questions, but in the interim, we appreciate staff time and agree with the recommendation for approval.
Any members of the public wishing to comment on this item?
Hi, guys. I'm Chris Mason. I live at twenty-one two two five Lago Bello Lane. This is my wife, Terry. I want to thank you guys for the time that you give to our community. It's very humbling. I've been, this is my first meeting I've been to, so thank you for your service to our community. We moved into this area about a year ago, and just recently with our notices, started, you know, getting, you know, notice that this was going to come in. It goes right up to our backyard on our property. Part of the reason we bought this property is to be up away from, you know, the metro area and be, enjoy the natural landscape up there where you go up there. And so, you know, also, things that we've noticed is that there is a traffic issue. They've already done some changes up there. There was a lot of accidents that happened when we first moved in, coming down from the casino. I know there's a roundabout that's been proposed. All these things I'm starting to just get privy to. And there's already traffic, and increased traffic going in with new housing that's going to be going down when the fire station comes in, up higher up there, and new houses coming in down below, the tracks that are already there. So I've started a petition with our local neighborhood there, especially the people on Lago Bello, but we have a lot of neighbors that are also, you know, opposed to this that I've talked to. So we have, you know, the traffic concerns. We also, there's been some water concerns there in that area. The neighbor, a couple of neighbors that I've talked to historically, they've had to, problems with drinking water and have to put in extra water filtration devices, which come as a huge increased cost. We're also concerned about the environment. There's a seasonal creek that runs right behind our property. There's a fire road, and then there's a seasonal creek that comes down there. And some people we've talked to said there is no vegetation in there, but there is a significant amount of trees and vegetation in there.
There's water in there right now, and a big buck has been going in and out of there. But there's a marsh, and it's a pretty large area of water. It goes around the trees and kind of fades out going down where it normally extends. Through Google Maps, it looks like there's only a creek coming in the front, but it also comes down from the golf course down this way, and that's, you know, a nice marsh. And then it all exits out and goes around our entire community, keeping the water away from the homes. It's a nice drainage, but it's also beautiful.
Yeah, it's a part of that community. I think the look in there, there is no apartments or these kind of complexes in there. They're all single residents up there in that neighborhood, so.
And we'll reset it for two minutes, because it looks like you and your wife are speaking as a tag team, so you'll have two more minutes. Well, it's going to be, this is also running your time, so if you have comments that you'd like to make, please make them now.
Go ahead.
Just, I had brought pictures. There's a large hill in the center of this, right at the creek. It goes up, I don't know if you call it a hill or a mountain. It's a small mountain or a very large hill, two big hills that they would have to dig out to. And then the hill across Millerton Road, that is all completely granite that they dug into, and then they stopped. So they just kind of defaced it, all granite. So the pollution from that is going to come into our homes. It's going to come in, you know, our solar panels, our vents, the bad air quality that Fresno already has bad air quality. We moved up here to get away, to have a little better air quality. Everyone living there, that is our home. Everybody's bought homes, are investing, apartments being built in the area by somebody who doesn't live there, and then people renting there, I feel they're not going to care about the area as much as we do. And I wanted to show pictures of the creek.
We've seen wildlife in there. We have pictures of deer that have been going through that seasonal creek area.
There's coyotes, foxes, turkeys. Right now, there's a bunch of quails. There's a lot. And the way they submitted, it looks like there's only a creek in the front, and they're coming back here, right up on the creek, which they would have to destroy it and all those plants. And there's a large variety of plants and a few different types of trees. And we just got this notice on Tuesday, and we haven't had time to put a lot together. He had to go, his dad had heart surgery. He just got back last night. Last night, he pulled up a petition in hopes that he thought one of the neighbors that we would hope to get together was to write letters to you, would have started a petition. He started a petition at ten o'clock last night. We already have eighty, almost eighty signatures, and we're, we haven't been able to get over to talk to the community and the golf course.
We also have concerns about the school and busing. Law enforcement with additional four hundred plus people that this will include in that area.
To me, it doesn't make sense that it would be less traffic. To me, it would be more like, it could be anywhere from six hundred to eight hundred people living, and it would be more traffic going to and from school. People like to drive their kids to school, drive their kids to sports.
Thank you. Thank you both for being here and your comments.
I'm Steve Roberts. I'm going to read this, because three minutes is not very long. I live on Soul Lane, kind of adjacent to the property, and I'd like to say a couple things. The notices that went out, Mr. Yule just mentioned, I haven't gotten one, and I'm a hundred yards from this thing. And then, less traffic is only less traffic. It's a whole different type of people, not business people coming in and out. This will be residents, total, anyway, it's just a different type of traffic. Less traffic is, less traffic is not necessarily safer traffic. Okay, about eight or nine years ago, my house was built. I moved in about five years ago. I was told that some of the homes where I live on Soul Lane, which is close, had some flooding problems. There's drainage, because drainage from the hills behind us was interrupted behind the homes. Today, the drainage from the rains and months of seepage off the hills flowed north from a ponding area behind three houses, through a covert, and then west into the natural creek that feeds the wetlands that they're talking about, and it's wetlands, with all the animals, it's wetlands, okay. I oppose the project as it blocks the natural flow, destroys the natural wetlands, may impact the groundwater, impacts nearby houses with uncontrolled volume, and mine's the closest house, so it's probably why I'm here right now. But there'll be more. Let's see. I oppose the, it also because of the clean air violations that can really occur with this type of construction. They plan to move a mountain, actually plan to move two mountains. And in Fryant, we know what that means to our air, because the casino, I think they were exempt, they moved the whole mountain. They moved the bigger, what these guys are going to do, that's true. But it brings air, it, you guys have responsibility for our air. You know, San Joaquin, air quality board, you know, they always get extensions and stuff, but maybe you guys can help us with our air. If they had a backbone, I think we'd have cleaner air. Anyway, I oppose the project because it's an, it's not an urban center at all. This is an urban project. They're putting it right in the middle of the foothills, and we pay a lot for trash and water, much more than you do in this city. We pay maintenance for our gas, for our cars, all that stuff. This is not affordable. If you're thinking it's like an affordable type of thing, it's not. It's just not. Seniors will not go there. There's no doctors there. There's nothing there for seniors. Okay, that's it, all the time I have. There's more, but that's all.
Thank you for your comments. If you have pictures, if you have pictures, you're more than welcome to give them to the clerk, and she can pass them to us. Yes, if you have some comments, please step forward.
I was going to speak.
Yeah, you're more than welcome to speak.
I wasn't going to be, I wasn't going to go ahead and speak, but I live in the neighborhood where they live. I live at twenty-one, two one three oh five Lago Bello Lane, right behind where they're proposing to build this. I live there, behind my yard. I've been there since twenty thirteen. There's always been a traffic issue out there. It's only a two lane. I know they expanded the road, but it wasn't fully expanded like they had proposed from the beginning. There's, there's a big danger there of traffic. My son just started driving. He got his license, he's a junior soul, and every night when he goes out to work or to, you know, to school, he's going to attend for the stay next year, or this coming year, I always get on the phone with my wife, because I'm scared because of the traffic, you know. There's been a lot of accidents. There's been a lot of fatal accidents, and by putting something like this out there in this neighborhood, all you're going to do is increase traffic, and there's more potential for accidents. And I'm just scared that one day, you know, there's going to be something like this with my family. I'm very concerned about this. Also, there's, you know, in the residential, there's like, they commented, there's beautiful hills. I waited a whole year, a whole year, for my house to be built because of the salamanders that live in there. And now you're going to come from nowhere and start building this? This is ridiculous. It shouldn't happen. We still get deers, we still get coyotes, we still get, and I've seen it with my two own eyes, because right behind where I live, there's nothing but hills in that creek that runs along my backyard. I mean, it's just ridiculous. I don't see how you guys can accept this. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment on this item, I'm going to close the public portion, and I do have some comments I need to make. So, looking at the Millerton Newtown area, there was a master plan created for that area in the nineteen eighties. There are two thousand units already approved. Right now, there's only about four hundred and fifty homes built. One of the speakers talked about expensive sewer and water, yeah, and trash. You want to know why it's so expensive? Because all two thousand units aren't there yet. As that infrastructure is fully built out and you have all those units, that cost is reduced because you have economies of scale. It is beautiful. Actually, I'm someone who rides a bike on Millerton Road. I'm one of the cyclists that you guys drive by, and I've been doing that for the last fifteen years. And actually, about twice a week, I'm out there on my bicycle at about six o'clock in the morning. So as you drive by, that's probably me. And so, traffic is something I'm very concerned with. Yes, maybe I shouldn't have told you that. Maybe some of you will try to hit me, who knows? But your comments resonate with me, because I'm not someone who has never been there. I've seen it with my own eyes. I've walked it with my own feet, and I've been on a bicycle with vehicles on that road where there is no bike lane, for most, about a three mile section, and I'm working very hard to try to get that section from Marina Drive out to Fryant widened. It's about thirty-five million dollars, but I've been working on that for the last seven years. All that to say, my goal is to try to make that area complete. I'm a private property rights guy. I'm also trying to do everything I can to reduce traffic trips where feasible. What is before us, it might not seem like it, but what was approved in two thousand and four, with what can go out there right now, because the entitlements have already been granted, is a more intensive use than what's being proposed today. And as I understand it, I believe that a large portion of this apartment project is being catered towards seniors, and I've, and I'm a little bit skeptical about a lot of this stuff. And so, Ginder Development, who's going to be the developer on this, I've walked some of Ginder's properties, and I can tell you, the senior projects that they have in the metropolitan area, they have seniors there. And actually, I've been very impressed with some of the amenities that they add as well. So there are some developers who don't have credibility, but Ginder, as a developer, does have credibility in my book, and I don't take their word for it. I go out and I look at their projects. So your concerns, I'm hearing those. I'm aware of it, and I want to do everything I can to make Millerton Road as safe as possible, but also too, adhere to those rights which were granted back in the nineteen eighties, when that two thousand unit development was approved, and now we're starting to see more and more portions of it being built out. So that's where I'm coming from as I make my recommendation today. With that being said, any other comments that any other board members may have? Please.
I'd like, Mr. Yule, I have a question or two.
Which, there's four of us here.
Yeah, you, you also. On the mountain thing, the removal of the two mountains, how long- On the mountain thing, the removal of the two mountains, how, how long does that part of the process last?
So, and I appreciate you raising the question. And just to clarify, consistent with what was approved in 2004 for the Hotel and Conference Center, there will be some grading. The overall height of the buildings will be consistent with what was approved in 2004 for the, for the multifamily units. So, there will be some mass grading on site, which will take place, and there's, we have not started the improvement plans yet. There's been some engineering drawings that have, that have occurred, but that'll take place throughout the, throughout the construction process.
So, it's kind of hard to say how long that part of the process, I, you know, I think all of us understand, when, when somebody builds a house next to us, we're gonna go through a little painful era where there is construction and, and the air quality suffers. But, you know, I'm trying to think, is that, is that a very long process? Or will that kind of like, be over with, and these folks' lives will go back to normal in relation to air quality?
Yeah, overall, it'll be a limited period of time. And again, the mitigation measures as it relates to air quality are, are part of the mitigation measures for the project. And those will be, that construction window will be limited. I'll look back to Giorgio, just to see if there's a particular window of time that he thinks that grading activity would, would occur.
Two and a half to three months.
Two and a half to three months.
And you're gonna do all of the proper things during that time, like water down?
Absolutely.
The grading process and all that kind of thing.
Yeah, the air quality mitigation measures are within item number two through seven in the mitigation matrix. And those are all consistent from the Air Pollution Control Board.
All right.
Yeah, and just to clarify, we're not removing the mountains.
Okay. All right.
Mountains are there, the, just like the, the neighboring Brighton Crest, the idea is to, to build and be consistent with the topography, not to change it.
All right. All right, that's, that's better then. Then, I had a second question about the, the marsh area. The little wetland area, and the seasonal creek. Is that gonna be removed? Is that part of it? Or is that still gonna be allowed to exist?
Yes, and thank you for, for raising that. That will not be removed. That is legally a jurisdictional water, regulated both by the federal government and the state of California. There is a hundred-foot average setback as it relates to the creek. That creek is seasonal, the, the water that there, that the residents are mentioning, that, that system actually receives discharge from Table Mountain Ranteria, that's received a federal permit to discharge regular flows into the water. But no, we are not able to discharge into it, we are not able to cover it, to fill it. It'll be consistent with the, the open space and management plan from the Millerton Newtown specific plan.
And there's a hundred-foot setback from that creek? So, none of your project is going to get closer than 100 feet to that?
It averages 100 through the 25 acres of the project.
So, there's still potential for wildlife to take advantage of that creek?
Absolutely. That corridor will remain.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we do a rebuttal to that?
The public portion's closed, so only if a supervisor has a question related to that. Yep.
Mr. Yule, I have a question for you, too. I understand this has been on the books a long time, can appreciate that. But we've had, over the last number of years, we've had several residents come forward that they have an issue with their water supply and different things. I'm curious as to, where is your water supply for these 200 units? Because I don't wanna give permission to build, and then three, four years from now, whenever it's done, people are coming forward, we're out of water, our rates are too high, everything else. So, where, where are you securing the water for these 200 units?
And I appreciate you raising it. This project's very unique. It actually has intake structures which were dropped into Millerton Lake in the 80s. This project actually receives surface water and only surface water. Groundwater is not allowed to be used in this project. It was a settlement that was reached by the landowners in the 80s. Groundwater's prohibited to be used for the project itself. However, the county, from time to time, actually needs to pump some groundwater next to the treatment facility, because there's actually, water is starting to raise, the, the water table is raised because of the surface water used by the golf course. But just to clarify, the golf course and all the residents use surface water, those are long-term, permanent contracts that were entered into with Fryant contractors. And again, that's permitted infrastructure that's actually located within the lake. And that water comes directly from right around the Marina area and runs over to the project.
So, are you using the existing water treatment facility there? Or you're creating your own for this project? Or how is that? Because I don't ride my bike up there like Supervisor Maxig, and I'm not familiar with it.
He rides his cows.
Yeah.
There, there's requirements in this project, as well as, as well as others, that are within the conditions of approval and the mitigation measures. The project will need to, as required, upgrade any of the facilities to make sure that the facilities are adequate, both in, in size and capability to deliver water, both water and wastewater, to the project.
So, you're using the facility that's already there?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
I don't know if we wanna talk too much about the GAC system that needs to go in there, but I'm, I'm game. We can do that. But...
Supervisor, are you done?
Yes, I'm done.
Supervisor Maxig, I thought Brian might ask this question, so I do wanna give this gentleman here a chance to say something, Austin, if you could let him...
Sure, and, and I'll just, real quick, because I know that, the, the point was raised as it relates to the California tiger salamander. There is a biological opinion, which is issued by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, as well as incidental take permit, which is issued by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And this project in particular has actually established more than 3,000 acres of a permanent preserve to offset any impacts to the California tiger salamander. Those properties have been secured and fully endowed in perpetuity to provide for the longevity of the California tiger salamander.
Thank you. Sir, I wanna give you a chance, but not to wander around on other items. We're talking about that little marsh area. I asked him, and you said you wanted to reply. So, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, thank you. Okay. We're missing the point. There's two creeks, there's two waterways. One is totally ignored by the plan, totally ignored. 100, 100 feet would be amazing. It would move their project away. I don't know what more to tell you. I could, you come out, and I'll show it to you. And if they stop that creek, or build and not handle that water, then those little ponding basins behind my house, my neighbors, two neighbors down, where it collects and goes through a little covert, I don't know who made that, I have no clue. But it goes that way to avoid our houses, then it goes into the natural creek. That's just a seasonal creek. It's not all the time. When it rains, and then when the golf course seeps, a whole lot of water.
Yeah, understood.
So...
Okay. It sounds like, it sounds like they're not allowed to impact that, that seasonal creek or that marsh area that you were talking about.
No, they're talking about a whole different creek. They're talking about, they're not even addressing this. You can ask him, he knows, he probably knows where it is. He doesn't know where it is, so he's not addressing it. It's where they have the pictures of the animals. It's the creek. It's, it's there during the cooler months and rain. It's a wetland, by definition. It's a, the temporary or seasonal wetland.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Then I'm gonna ask our staff about some clarification on that. It sounds like the developer couldn't impact these, these wetlands or these creeks. Is that correct?
They cannot, and that wetland, which has been identified on the site plan, the creek, that's the one staff's aware of, and that's the one that, that they, where they need to have that 100-foot average buffer from.
All right. All right, thank you.
All right. So, with that, I don't think we have any more comments or questions as it relates to this, but there's additional improvements that need to be made. One last question. What ownership does Ben have in the surface water plant? Is it 18%? 13%? In the surface water plant? 18%. You still retain it? This project will utilize your ownership of it, and you're still committed to your share of the plant, making sure any upgrades that are needed as it relates to water quality standards will be met. Is that correct? I'll note for the record, the applicant says yes, and I'm gonna hold him to that. So, very good. So, with that, this is in my district, and again, based upon all information that's been presented, I can support this action here today, and would make a motion for staff's recommendations as stated in the report. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously.
We now move to Title Number Nine, Board Supervisor Committee Reports and Comments.
Supervisor Brandow.
I have none.
Supervisor Mendez, I think you've got a long list.
This meeting took too long.
Ah, you loved every minute of it. All right, Supervisor Quintero. Supervisor Pacheco, none? And I'll just, I have to report out on a couple of things. I was your NACO voting representative, and the NACO conference took place in Tampa. I was there, cast votes. Resolution that I had drafted as it relates to encouraging Congress to pass a budget to help us with, so we can pass our budget on time, in a timely fashion, was approved. So, we've got a little stamp of Fresno County now nationally, that NACO is, has adopted that, and they're moving forward with that resolution, so that was exciting. Also, I attended a CASA conference, California Association of Sanitation Agencies in Monterey. Lot of craziness coming down from Sacramento as it relates to discharge, things that can be discharged in, from sewer plants, and a lot of additional upgrades that may need to be made in the next five years. Got to participate in the Lager's Jamboree as a, just a viewer. That was a lot of fun. And also, concert series on Saturday. So, lots of things going on in District Five, and that's all I have.
So, we now move to Title Number Ten, Board Appointments.
Supervisor Brandow, do you have any appointments? Supervisor Mendez? Supervisor Quintero?
I have one appointment, a reappointment of Michael Keller to the Assessment Appeals Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to appoint Mr. John Valdez to the Housing Authority of Fresno County, replacing Stacy Sablon in the Member A position for a term ending February 3rd, 2025.
All right, excellent. I've got two appointments, and also, called a action to the public, I need more individuals to apply to the Dunlap Cemetery District. But two appointments that I have here, Squaw Valley Cemetery District, reappoint Albert Schrock to the District Five seat, and to the Behavioral Health Board, reappoint Brooke Frost to the District Five seat. Is there anyone in the public wishing to comment on any of the appointments that we have just, that we're gonna be making? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public portion and entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes.
We now move to Title Number Eleven, Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the board on any matter not on this agenda.
Hello, my name is Karen Campbell. Thank you for allowing us to do these presentations. My colleagues and I live in Fresno County, and are volunteers with United Sovereign Americans. We're not spokespeople. United Sovereign Americans is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. Today, we come to you as concerned citizens, sharing alarming information about our state's voter roll database. Research of the state's voter database was done through hundreds of hours of research conducted by highly qualified credential data teams. An analysis of the 2022 election researched by the highly qualified data teams, using only official data provided by California's election officials, indicates serious issues with compliance of federal law. We are here to present to you and the public the results of the aforementioned analysis showing the votes cast, counted, and certified may not all be valid and accurate under the Constitution and under the law. We are not here to cast any blame or aspersions on any elected officials. We do not suggest any candidates in any race have wrongly won or lost races, nor do we advocate for the overturning or rerunning of any past elections. Today, we will present you with a resolution demanding an end to inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with a summary of our findings and the laws that apply. Though, though you bear no direct responsibility for anything in the electoral process, we realize that, we come to you in our closest, our closest elected representatives, we come to you, our representatives, for support and action. We're asking that you listen to the resolution and take the necessity for valid elections seriously by adding the resolution to your next meeting agenda. Thank you for listening, and our next three speakers will read the resolution in three parts, and our final speaker will conclude our presentation. Thank you.
Try to speak as close to the microphone as you can.
My name is Leslie Swan. I'm a resident of Fresno County, and I'm here to read into the record the first portion of the USA Resolution. Resolution for a Legally Valid 2024 General Election. Whereas it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections, whereas it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation, whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. One, the voter rolls must be accurate, National Voter Registration Act 1993. Two, votes counted must be from eligible voters, U.S. Constitution, 14th Amendment, Section Two. Three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Number four, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system. That's from the Help America Vote Act 2002. Whereas the analysis of the California 2022 general election has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that appear to violate both federal and state laws, including 5,886,198 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the California voter roll database, 2,776,939 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrations, 123,785 more votes counted than voters who voted. No one knows who cast them. 2,776,849 apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. The maximum allowable system errors for the 2022, 2022 general election was 90. Certification as defined by law is an attestation of accuracy and compliance. The certification of the 2022 election appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. Whereas these findings trample the legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election, and whereas the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Whereas the 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our nat, natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us, the American people.
I just wanna note that you will get a copy of this. We're not gonna quiz you later. My name is Tammy Richardson, and I am a resident of Fresno County, and I'm here to read into the record the next section of the USA Resolution. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility, tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. Number one, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility required to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Number two, voter rolls certified, accurate, and available for public review and challenged 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Number three, hand-marked secure ballots similar to currency. Where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Number four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Number five, adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate, and trained citizen witness after... and trained citizen witness after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and cast vote records.
I will finish the resolution. My name is Cindy Fukuyama, and I'm a resident of Fresno County for the last 45 years. Number five, excuse me, six. Ballots, regardless of entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Number seven, a national institute of standards and technology compliant, randomized, statistically valid, end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2 must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, insured, and bonded security, forensics, or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, cast vote records, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic election systems, including logs. Number eight, if the total of unique variances above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected, unless the issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand recount and a full review of records. And number nine, waiver of these requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. We implore the Fresno Board of Supervisors, the California Legislature, federal legislatures, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges, and both California Secretary of State and county registrars of voters to cooperate and fulfill these firm requests of the people.
My name is Sharon Teroian, and I am here to conclude our presentation. What you heard tonight is a powerfully written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our 2022 election from registration through certification. The resolution delineates meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the 2024 general election for all Americans. Your written copy cites many U.S. Supreme Court precedents and federal and constitutional mandates that support the need for such actions. Large numbers of Californians have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. Official data show that these concerns are valid, and the law says resolving them is essential in securing our liberty. The cost for not fixing the enumerated problems is immeasurable. So we urge you, put this resolution on the agenda for the next Fresno County Board meeting, where you can vote to join us in support of fair, honest, and valid elections. United Sovereign Americans website showcases our initiatives nationwide and features some extremely informative election videos. We encourage you to visit uniteforfreedom.com and learn more about our organization and our goal to restore valid elections throughout our country. That's unite, the number four, forfreedom.com. One more time, unite, the number four, freedom.com. I have copies of the resolution that we just shared and would like to leave them with the clerk for your review. Thank you.
Seeing no further public comment, I'm going to close the public. Okay, we've got one more comment.
Afternoon, Board. My name's Manny Amorelli. I'm the general manager at James Irrigation District and James Groundwater Sustainability Agency. I'm joined today by growers out of our district. We're a small district, approximately 26,000 acres south of Kerman. And we are represented by Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Pacheco also is on the North Kings Groundwater Sustainability Agency's board, also on the MAGSA, the McMullen Area Groundwater Sustainability Agency board. Our board has an issue with what is going on out in our district. Couple of weeks ago, we were served with a cease and desist with our rights that we have in our wellfield that located, and they're located in MAGSA. We are being told we need to stop pumping. We need to give up our rights, but we are not being treated fairly. We believe that Mr. Pacheco has a conflict that is not being addressed and is not being looked upon by members of the community. We just want to put that out there for everyone to know our statement and what's going on. Thank you for your time.
All right, I'm going to close the public portion. And next item on the agenda.
At this time, you could ask for public comment for closed session items through 12...
Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on any closed session items? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion. And do we need to report out on any items?
Despite the length of the closed session agenda, I do not anticipate any reports out of closed sessions. So it would be appropriate to adjourn following closed session if the board so chooses.
I'll entertain a motion to that end. We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion second, and all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, we will adjourn following closed session.